Okay, it's five o'clock. Can we have Chaplain, please?
Could we stand as we pray and then we'll be saying the pledge after this? Heavenly Father, we just come before you today. I look around this room and I imagine there's a lot that are heavy into this season of Lent and looking forward to a Palm Sunday and Easter that's happening and really we just are in this attitude of just thankfulness. And I pray tonight as we go through this commissioner meeting that there will be thankfulness, there will be conversation, there will be debate, there will be things that we need to be able to talk about. And I pray that you'll be with each one of these commissioners as they vote, as they decide. I also pray for those first responders that are out on the road that are protecting us while we have this freedom to come in here and to be able to express our opinions and to do the things for the county. And we pray this all, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll call the April 7th, 2025 meeting of the Burley County Park Board to order. First item is roll call of members.
Commissioner Herman.
Here.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Here.
Commissioner Munson.
Here.
Commissioner Bakken.
Here.
Commissioner Schwab.
Here.
Commissioner Bame.
Here.
Chairman Bitner.
Here.
Next is approval of the agenda. Anybody have any concerns or questions with the park board agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Bame.
Yes.
Commissioner Herman.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes. Motion carries. Next is consideration of the October 21st, 2024 meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, I read the meeting minutes and move to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Bame.
Yes.
Commissioner Herman.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes. Motion carries. Next, Bismarck Parks and Recreation Operations Director Mayor, request authorization to obtain quotes for the dredging of boat ramps, Kimball bottoms, and knifel and then discussion of a ramp rebuild. Welcome in.
Good evening, Commissioners. I think you said it all what I'm here for. I just wanted to have the discussion with the board. We did get the 404 permits as we had discussed last fall for both Kimball and Knifel. That time of year, wanted to make sure the board was all right with going out for some quotes to see what the prices would be to do that dredging. Just as an update, Kimball bottoms is not as in bad a shape as it was last year at this time, but there's definitely some dredging that could be done to better fishing and better access off that ramp. Can still see some concrete through in spots on one side of the dock versus the other, but again, it still could use it. Probably a little bit less material than last year. Knifel is a different story. I'm sure you're all aware of the situation up at Knifel. The water is low like it is along the entire river, but that area is in desperate need of some dredging, at least in the boat ramp area. The permit, the authorization with the permit does take us all the way out to the entrance to the river, just on the south half of that main channel that goes in. So it's addressing the boat ramp area, a larger amount, definitely a larger amount there than there would be up or down at Kimball and much more than what was done at Knifel last year. Quantity wise, it's kind of hard to see under the water sometimes, but I had estimated, I believe the permit that I had requested from the Corps was authorization of up to 800 cubic yards. I hope we don't hit that amount. It depends on where he hits bottom. It's kind of a, if you've seen them dredge before, it's kind of, he goes by feel and he can definitely feel when he hits the bottom versus what the silt is. It's pretty unique when they do it, but I think that we'd be safe with the 800 easily. Hopefully, we don't get past 500 up in that one.
Do you have a location for dumping the material?
Good question. Kimball bottoms, we have authorization to dispose of that down in the OHV area in the desert as we have last couple of years. The contractor will have to dispose of the other material elsewhere unless somebody can think of something where we could dispose of the silt from Knifel. Otherwise, we leave it on the contractor.
I was just talking to a guy today that mentioned some lot up north that would be a possible location for some fill. Let's see if we can put you two in contact with it.
That would be great. Yep, if we have a spot to dispose of it, if it's close by, we may save some money on hauling.
Yeah, it would be up, well, you know where the new Capital Electric facility is up on 83?
Yes.
Apparently, it's just on the south side of that.
Oh, okay.
On the west side of 83.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
I know last year, we were in the same boat. We got lucky, there was someone developing some lots up there and we were able to cut our hauling fees in half, so.
Yeah.
Second point, too, is I know Misty Waters is also working on dredging the north half of their, of that channel as well. They've recognized some issues up there and so they're also working on it. So hopefully, we can get this all done together. With that, I would move to approve the request for authorization to obtain quotes for dredging of both boat ramps, Kimball bottoms, and Knifel.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Herman.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Bame.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes. Motion carries. Next, go ahead.
Discussion for boat ramp rebuild. If you recall, last year, the county commission received a letter from the Army Corps of Engineers about possibly doing something or taking care of the old ramp down at Kimball bottoms. I was asked again, many conversations with the Corps with the property that the Park District maintains up and down the river, so they had asked me at a different meeting about the status of that and I just wanted to revisit that with the board. I did reach out to Michael Gunch to ask him to kind of dust off that conversation from last year and start putting some numbers together to figure out what those costs would be for them to submit a proposal, to design something, to at least that way we know where we're at. I just wanted to have that conversation and let you know that trying to make a little bit of, trying to make some headway on that so that we don't get too crossed with the Corps on that one.
Commissioners, any questions about that? Obviously, you'll be coming back with that.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, any other business for the?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Woodcox.
I went down to Sibley Park yesterday and that boat ramp that's back in there, way back in the back corner, is that workable? Didn't we talk about last fall of doing something there this year? Did we dedicate any money to that or anything like that?
Are you referring to the boat ramp in generous Sibley Park and campground?
Yeah.
That is Park District managed and that's not county managed.
Oh, okay. Good.
But that is, that is passable with small water craft.
Yeah, well, that was my next question, can you get out of there because you're quite a ways away from the river and you have to weave your way back and forth.
Yes, yeah. When the water's low, kayaks and canoes, when the water's high, you might get a small boat out of there. It's just, just the way the river is kind of cut through there and it's just deposited a lot of sand and silt back in there and it's just not a, not a high-use boat ramp.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other business for the county park board? I'll adjourn the county park board. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Call the April 7th, 2025 meeting of the Burley County Commission to order. First item on the agenda is roll call of members.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Here.
Commissioner Munson.
Here.
Commissioner Bakken.
Here.
Commissioner Schwab.
Here.
Chairman Bitner.
Here.
Next is a conversation about the agenda. I want to move a couple of items on the agenda. Want to take item number eight, State's Attorney Lawyer. Move that up to first agenda, item number 14. Want to move that up after the State's Attorney's presentation. And then there's two items on the agenda, Commissioners, I'd like to discuss this a little bit. There's a 15 and a 16 discussion regarding Bismarck, Burley Public Health and County Auditor Treasurer Splaskowski investment status update. I don't see any agenda packet information on those. Anybody get any information or know who's presenting on the public health? Is there anybody here from public health that was going to present?
As the portfolio holder, I don't know anything about it.
That was an item that the Joint City-County Commission requested to be on the agenda just so they could get some direction on where we're going into for the 2026 budget. So that's why that's on the agenda.
It was kind of a placeholder, it was a budget discussion. So they were curious about our intent to start their budget process.
Okay.
I would, I would suggest we move that to next meeting so that...
Yeah. Okay. So we're going to scratch item 15, discussion regarding Bismarck, Burley Public Health to the next regular meeting. And then County Auditor Treasurer, did you have any handouts or anything you were going to provide?
I do. Yeah, it wasn't ready until today. I wasn't able to get it in the packet.
Okay. Well, we've had that conversation a couple of times. We need to have that information in the packets so the Commissioners can review that.
Sure.
Okay, so we're going to move that one up to after the State's Attorney and then he can present that and then the Finance Director will present after that. Clear. Any other changes anybody wants to make?
Move to approve with the changes mentioned.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. Consideration of the December 16th, 2024, March 22nd, March 29th, and April 2nd meeting minutes and March 17th meeting minutes and bills. I looked back at the last meeting, I said that there was an email that was going to clarify some language in the December 16th meeting minutes. So on page, what is now, I believe, page eight. So it says page two on the left side is 008 on the right. Kind of about, just about in the middle of the page, there's a comment where the, it says Jacob's report had compared treasuries against CDs, for example, rather than comparing treasuries against treasuries, CDs against CDs, et cetera, as prescribed in the manual. It says this is a misrepresentation of the investment policy which states the benchmarks should be reflective of the actual investments being purchased. So we need to insert what the policy actually says, that benchmarks should be reflective of the actual investments being purchased in place of as prescribed in the manual. You understand what I'm saying there? Okay. Tom, you understand that? Okay. Other than that, that was the only change that I needed on the December 16th. And what are your wishes on the others?
Mr. Chair, I approved the bills this afternoon, so I would move approval of the Denver, December 16th as amended, March 22nd, March 29th, April 2nd, March 7th meeting minutes as well as the bills.
March 17th.
March 17th.
Okay. Motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
No.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes. Motion carries.
Commissioner Bitner.
Commissioner Woodcox.
This December 16th one, I think this is about the fifth or sixth meeting, but we've considered those. This is five months old. Have they been posted in the Tribune? Because that one has not been. Good, because we made about five changes and what's the rules on putting them in there? Have we got a timeline or anything like that?
We can only submit them to the newspaper once they've been approved.
Okay. And there's no time limit on that?
On the approval, not to my knowledge.
No, on the submitting them to the Tribune?
Yes, there is a time limit, but I have to look exactly when that is. It's seven days, I believe, after they've been approved. Yeah, after approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, the consent agenda, we got abatements, primary residents, credit abatements, gaming site authorization, second access permit, accepting platted right-of-ways, RRH subdivision, Love's Waste Water Letter of Approval, and right-of-way for Paradise Point subdivision. Does anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda for discussion? If not?
And will we approve the agenda for all the abatements and five A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H?
Second.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes. Motion carries. Telecommunications week proclamation. Does anybody have information to present on that?
This is something that we've typically approved every year. This is something that Mike Danfeller sent to me and requested that I be read at the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 13th through the 19th.
Second.
Motion second to approve the telecommunications week. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda will be State's Attorney Lawyer, information regarding redesignation of Auditor Treasurer.
Did we skip number seven? We're at seven though.
That's public hearing. I moved this stuff in front of the public hearing.
Okay.
And because we don't have this many people here to hear.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm not sure if there's something that I have to press on the equipment up here to show you my PowerPoint, if there is.
They'll switch it over.
Could you let me know? Okay. So no PowerPoint, you'll just have to follow along. I'll try to read what I had printed on my slides, but I was asked to present a few things regarding some questions that have come up during the public hearings on this issue regarding redesignating the Auditor Treasurer as an elective position. First things is the Home Rule Charter. People have indicated that they believe they were misled by the addition to the Home Rule Charter that, and I heard a comment where somebody indicated that they thought the Home Rule Charter gave the Commission dictatorial powers, oh, here we go, or made them a dictatorship, so I just wanted to clear that up. First of all, it's important to note what the Home Rule Charter actually says. The authority for what's happening here comes from state statute, not from the Home Rule Charter. All the Home Rule Charter did was add a provision that says the Board of County Commissioners may follow state law, converting the elected offices of the County Auditor Treasurer and the County Recorder into appointed offices. Any resolution to convert an elected office to an appointed office shall not shorten the term for which an official was elected nor reduce the salary of the official's office for that term. It also added a provision that the County Commissioners may follow state law concerning the organization and structure of elected county offices in accordance with state law. So all it did was clarify that the County Commission can still utilize state law to redesignate offices or convert offices and convert the structure. It's important to note that in the century code under Home Rule Charter, which I have up here now, it indicates powers. After filing with the Secretary of State of a charter approved in reasonable conformity with this chapter, the county and its citizens may, if included in the charter and implemented through ordinances, provide for county-elected and appointed officers and employees their selection, powers, duties, qualifications, and compensation in the terms of county-appointed officers and employees, meaning we could include all of that in our Home Rule Charter. However, after the adoption of a Home Rule Charter, a county-elected office may not be eliminated or combined with another office except upon approval of a majority of the electors of the county voting upon the question at a primary or general election or pursuant to the county officer combination separation or designation procedures of Chapter 11-10.2. So with or without those provisions that we added to the Home Rule Charter in 2022, we still could be pursuing this option. I have always said to the Home Rule Charter Committee, to this committee, that this, if we went through the redesignation of offices from appointed to elected, that it would go to a vote if it were contested. I have always said that. If I could do things differently, I would have walked through the law to explain better what that law said, but that's what I've always said. So I'm sorry that people felt they were misled, but they were informed that it would go to the voters if contested. And with or without that provision in the century code, or I'm sorry, in the Home Rule Charter, we would still be right here. And if those provisions were something that prevented or would have prevented people from voting for the Home Rule Charter in 2022, you have to keep in mind that the Home Rule Charter for 2022 replaced the one from 2013. The 2013 Home Rule Charter had an expiration date on it and it would have been expired by now. So with or without those provisions in the Home Rule Charter, with or without the adoption of the 2022 Home Rule Charter, we would be right where we are now. And so I wanted to make that clear. So basically, we're here because the Commission has concerns regarding the person who's in charge of the money for the county. We have a $40 million budget and we need someone in an auditor's position that has experience with accounting and finance. I've heard public comments that we need separation of powers, we need someone who answers to the voters and not the Commission, and someone who can audit the decision on finances of the Commission. So I think it's important to know what the job duties of the auditor are. And I know that that was specifically read out of state statute, but I've tried to make it a little bit easier. There's basically three major functions of the county auditor. One of them is making and preserving records. So they're the clerk for the county commission, they keep books required to be kept by the commission, they have to file certain documents and papers, they have to preserve items that are required to be kept in the auditor's office, they ensure certain bonds are recorded by the county recorder, they certify status of taxes and special assessments on property transfers, prepare and update a record or plat showing boundaries of school districts, and they keep tax deed records for property foreclosed upon due to unpaid taxes. So that is their making and preserving of records duties. Then, they're also the chief financial officer for the county. They have to perform and transact all county business, keep a complete and detailed record of all financial transactions, they have to provide an annual financial statement and that's to the county commission, they have to file and preserve all accounts, vouchers, papers pertaining to settlements of accounts, they issue warrants to taxing districts, there's an annual report of depreciated value of county buildings and contents to the Insurance Commissioner, there's annual financial statements from entities authorized to levy property taxes that they have to compile, and then they provide an annual report of those account balances along with the county's account balances to the state auditor. And then their third major function is administrator of elections. And I took this from the elections statute, which basically walks through everything that they're supposed to do regarding elections and it all applies to elections. If you look at all of the job duties, the auditor doesn't review the books to make sure that they're in compliance with state law, like some people have argued that we need that separation so that person can do that. They're responsible for ensuring that the money getting paid out of the county coffers are what has been budgeted by the county commission and don't exceed that. They don't have really any oversight over the county commission establishing a budget. The only oversight really that the auditor has for the county commission is the last bullet item here, which is calling a special election if the county commission fails or refuses to call a special election that's required by law. That's the only way they basically supersede the county commission. The job duties of the treasurer are listed up here kind of broken down, but they're all financial. They receive all the money belonging to the county, they pay out money belonging to the county, they keep an accurate and detailed record and receipts of all incoming money, they're supposed to provide a daily statements of receipt and disbursements to the county auditor. And that's kind of where that checks and balances comes in. The treasurer takes the money in and pays the money out, the auditor is supposed to get receipts of all that to make sure it's all being done correctly. Not audit it, but then we have two people looking at it. Send estimated tax statements, final tax statements, keep a true account of receipts and expenditures of all tax money. There's annual accounting of current taxes that has to be audited and verified by the county auditor. So the county auditor is kind of the checks and balances for the treasurer and we've combined those offices. Furnish the county auditor a list of delinquent taxes, pay taxes levied, collect to and collected to entity levying the taxes. So when we're collecting taxes on behalf of like the Soil Conservation District or whoever, that person makes sure they get those. And then they keep a regular account with each school district. So those are the duties of the treasurer, again, all financial. So like I said, the concern is that we have somebody filling that position that has the knowledge, the skills, and the ability to do those jobs, especially the financial ones. Other counties, as I've pointed out when we first started this, have had those same concerns and have redesignated their auditor and treasurer to an appointed office. And so I kind of put the list down of the counties that do have an appointed auditor and what their budgets are. So Cass and Grand Forks have approximately a budget of $59 million from the last budget numbers I could find. Lemoore, Nelson, Pierce, all have less than $10 million, Richland with 13.7, Stutzman with 32, Towner, Walsh, $10 million or below, Ward County $60 million, and Wells County $11 million. And again, they had some of the same concerns. So I did find the most recent, the most recent I could find information on was Cass County. It's an old newspaper article from the Fargo Forum from August 22nd, 2017. And the concerns that they had, a county auditor needs a certain background of financial experience. This is not a unique skill required of elected officials in any specific manner. So under the law, there's no requirement that they have any background or education to be an auditor even though they're the chief financial officer of the county. And that was the concern that this particular individual, who by the way, is Representative Judy Lee from West Fargo, she was the only person that actually spoke in their public session that day. And her quote was, I think it's really scary, the really scary thing for everybody is that I could run for every one of those offices and I'm not qualified for any of them. And I think that's the concern that we're trying to address with this redesignation. And so our 2025 approved budget was $40.6 million. And so the Commission's concern is making sure that we have somebody that has the knowledge, skills, and ability to do that. So I kind of put together a couple of applicants to see who you'd want, you know, just to take a look at what we're looking at, to see who you would want to take care of your $40.6 million in finances. So applicant number one has a bachelor's degree in chemistry, a master's degree in administration, their work experience as Assistant Director of Education, which included budgeting up to $9 million in grants, and then he was an environmental quality manager. Is that someone you want as your chief financial officer? Number two, associates in health and healthcare administration and management, a bachelor's degree in human service management, and then work experience as a parent care center outreach director and an executive director for a nonprofit for the... director and an executive director for a nonprofit for the disabled. Applicant number three has a high school diploma from a homeschool. They worked as a weed sprayer, a construction worker, and valuation of property. Here, bachelor's in accounting, they were an accountant at a local business and worked as the county tax equalization director. This one has a bachelor's in accounting, was an auditor at the North Dakota State Auditor's Office, which included doing county financial audits and also worked as a construction This one has a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in history and worked as an executive director of heritage tourism. And the last one, bachelor's in finance and international business, a CPA in finance and internal auditing, was an accountant for city government, a hospital, and a corporation. So who would you want to be the person in charge of your $40 million? So, most likely, it would be somebody with an accounting or a finance background, someone who's familiar with the job duties and doing those things. So the job descriptions or the very short blips that I showed you of resumes actually come from an appointed auditor from Fargo, an appointed auditor from Grand Forks, and everyone who's run for county auditor for Burley County in the last two elections. Those are their resumes. So leaving it as an elected position doesn't give you a lot to choose from. It's whoever chooses to take their time and their money and run for elected office, and they might not have the skills and ability to do the job. So I was also asked, what kind of options do we have, then, to assuage the commission's concerns regarding having somebody in that position of handling the money that doesn't have the knowledge, skills, and ability, and the public's concerns about being able to vote for the county auditor? So right now, what we're doing is the process of redesignating the auditor treasurer as appointed by resolution. You also have the option of redesignating the office itself. You can separate the county auditor treasurer into two or more elective or appointive offices by resolution. You can designate selection, powers, duties, functions, qualifications, training, and terms, and compensation, and also under that, you can appoint a county manager. I know that's something that the commission has been talking about for a number of years is getting a county manager, and that can be done under this process as well. It's the same process to do that. But if we look at option two, you can separate out the financial duties. All the treasurer duties are financial, so you can separate the auditor and treasurer and put all the financial duties under a treasurer. You can keep the auditor elected and then leave the auditor to do the record-keeping duties and the election duties. You could reassign financial duties to an appointed treasurer. That way, all the finances would be somebody who you could control regarding their knowledge, their skills, their ability, like you wouldn't hire somebody who didn't have the minimum You could also require the elected auditor to attend election training, open records and meeting training, since that would be their functions. Right now, there's nothing that, for an elective office, there are trainings and things available, but there's nothing you can do to require people to go to trainings. And if you kept the auditor elected, you still couldn't require them to go to trainings. However, you're the ones that determine compensation for that position. And so you could require them to go to the training and base the compensation on whether or not they've completed training requirements, whether they've attended the auditor training through the Association of Counties, or they've gone through the Secretary of State's election worker training. And so there are things you can do regarding that to ensure that those trainings are taking place. And that may be an option to, again, settle the fears regarding someone who doesn't have that background handling the money of the county versus keeping the auditor position elected. So that's what I had to present, just to give you some options and the history of why we're here and how we're here. And I know that was really fast, and I apologize for that, but I know we've got a lot on the agenda as well. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I do have one question. You said we could separate the auditor and the treasurer functions. Those were combined, I think, in the '90s at some point?
I think it was 2006 that that was officially done.
2006, okay. So it would just, by resolution of the board, could do that? That wouldn't need an election or...
That would be the same process. So this is the process that we followed to combine those offices and combine those duties. So we would be doing the same process to separate those offices and separate those duties. And so we've already started the process, and so, you know, we have a preliminary resolution, so that can always be modified. But I would suggest, too, that since this is the last public hearing, if you are going to modify it drastically, you might want to open it up for more comment or more public hearings. Again, we have additional time. I was asked another question, too, that I didn't have a slideshow or a PowerPoint slide for, however, and that was, if this does go to a vote, actually, I think I do, if this does go to a vote, can we have a special election on it? And yes, you can. There's nothing that prevents you from calling a special election prior to the primary or general election for a, I don't know if I have that on here, but I had the law where it said, if there's a resolution that needs to go to, or, I can't remember the exact word they used, that needs to go to the voters, a very specific one, that can be a special election, if you wanted that to be. It's not required, but it's possible.
That's the first I heard of that. I was being told that we couldn't do a special election.
The statute says that it goes on the next general election, but when I looked up the rules regarding special election, it appears that a special election can be called. It's not required to be called, because of course, there's a lot of expenses that go with holding a special election, but it's a possibility.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for State's Attorney?
All right, thank you.
Chairman and Commissioners, it was requested that I give a report, basically explaining where we have funds invested in active investments, what kind of investments they're in, and then the maturity date, interest rate, and all that kind of stuff. So this is not a quarterly report. If that's what you're thinking you're getting, it's not. A quarterly report is much more extensive than this would be. So this right here, I'll kind of go point by point, and so the blue area here, and if I could get this up on the Elmo, I don't know if that's possible, we're kind of having difficulties with techn...
Mr. Chairman, while he's doing that, what's the date of these? Are these polled recently, like, first of this month or the end of the year?
This is based on the newest bank statements that I've received from each individual bank.
And that could be, what, two days ago?
Some are very new, some of them are...
Recent, they're not six months old or...
Correct. Some of them are a few days old, the other ones are a little older than that, because we haven't received the bank statements from those banks yet. I wanted to give you the most up-to-date snapshot in time, which is all this is. Okay, that top section there, that portion is in the Bank of North Dakota that is not locked into our bonds for the defeasance of the bond. That is something that's going to be the debt service fund and surplus funds that is, that will probably be opening up once we get our escrow agreement signed with Morton County. The green portion there is the portion that is locked down for the defeasance of the bond. Those are pretty much, like I said, they're locked down, we can't be messing with those, otherwise our bond's not defeased. The portion in the pink is a portion of, I believe that's SenCom funds, that's in the Bank of North Dakota. Here you can see, I have got the bank on the left side, next to that is the investment type, interest yield, purchase date, purchase maturity, and then the principal amount, which is the original amount that was invested in that particular investment. In the peach color area, that is the second half of that half cent of the one cent sales tax that we are accruing since this approval and being enacted, that we have received thus far. Below that, I tried to put them in gray versus white bars, so they're a little bit more understandable. Everything below that is various funds from different departments that we have invested in different banks. This does not include the sweep account that we have with Wells Fargo, since that is constantly going up and down, that's more of a passive investment, so I did not include that in this one. These are active investments.
Can we ask questions? Mr. Chairman, look at the gray one, two-thirds of the way down, it said BNC National Bank, .75% and .5% on $48 million?
$49,000.
$49,000, okay.
Yep, so, and we just met with the investment committee here last week, and there's certain things that we're going to be adjusting within the next couple of weeks to go ahead and make some improvements on this.
What do we get, what's the interest rate on this sweep account?
That varies. It's probably right around four-something percent.
Not zero or...
It's not zero. In fact, what we did decide to do last year was, instead of, we used to keep a balance in our checking account, and then we would sweep over when we went under that balance. But now we're running at a zero balance, because we're making more money in the sweep account than we are in the main checking account.
Mr. Chairman, if I may continue. If you, Bank of North Dakota seems like they've got, well, they got 3.6336, 40, almost $50 million of our investments. Isn't that overly concentrated in that one facility?
So if you look at the type of investments that those are in, that is almost completely made up with that bond for the detention center. Once that detention center is, the escrow agreement is signed, a major chunk of that can come out of there, like that portion at the top with the blue, that portion can be spent at the county commission's discretion. The portion in pink there, that's, like I said, I believe that's SenCom's money that's invested in the treasury, and then that would start making it a little bit more even. But that's really, the reason that we're so heavy in Bank of North Dakota right now is because of that sales tax.
What are the dates associated with the First International Bank money markets?
Money markets don't have a date. So that's something that we can...
So what was that invested in? Do you know when that was put in there?
I'd have to look and see exactly when that was put in there. If you look at that 13 million, 13505, that is ARPA funds that we currently have. As Mr. Jacob has said in the past, we're going to be moving that money around in the books. If we move that around in the banks, that's a separate thing, we certainly can. But that's what that one is, the $14.4 million, that one is, the majority of it is general funds, but then the rest of it is made up of miscellaneous funds within the county.
Okay, so it looks like it was around February 28. Looks like that was around February 28, and so we have 4.02% on the 28th. But we invested $1 million with Choice Bank on February 25 at 4.15. Does that sound right?
Yep, it's in there. That's a, yeah, CD versus a money market.
And it looks like we also made a shorter-term treasury investment at BND on February 25 for 4.27%.
Yep, and all that depends on the length of time it's going to be in that investment, how much you're going to be investing, and the type of investment that's being made. Kind of what I've been seeing lately is, in the shorter term, as in 12 months and less, because when we go ahead and reinvest a certain amount of funds, we have to determine what budget, what line item that's coming out of, communicate with that department head to make sure that we're meeting our liquidity needs, and then we can go ahead and reinvest that based on the department head's discretion. Commissioner Munson just received an email from me here a few weeks ago, asking him how he wanted to invest some of the money for the Missouri Valley complex, just to make sure that we have liquidity needs met. So that's going to, there's a variable amount of reasons why the different interest yields are going to be different, and so we always send out, try to get quotes from at least three different banks, to try to get the best rate that we can, based on the different investments that we can place them into.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Chair.
Commissioner Munson.
And this may not be a question for you, it might be, Lee, when are we going to be able to sign the defeasance for the jail bond? Do we have an approximate?
Sooner than later, hopefully. I know the finance office was working on the details of the breakdown between Morton County and Burley County. I believe that has been accomplished now, I'm trying to see if Lee wants to say anything on it, and then has been sent over to our legal counsel for the bond issuance. So I believe that we're waiting on confirmation from them, and then they're going to put together the escrow agreement, and hopefully that'll be before this commission with the next couple of meetings. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the auditor? Commissioner Schwab.
Mark, is there, do we handle a lot of cash?
Define a lot. Yes, we do.
Okay. How do we get it in? What banks are we putting it in?
The banks that we are putting it in, so our list of approved depositories comes before the commission at least once every even-numbered year, if not every year. So that's something that this commission has to approve before we can put any money in any bank. When I first became auditor, I believe we were in either eight or 10 different banks. We had money everywhere. And so my goal was to consolidate that down to a manageable amount so that we could keep an eye on it better, and so we've been able to start paring it down one bank at a time so that we can make it more manageable.
My question is, then, how much money do we normally have in your office? What's the most we've ever had?
Oh, you know, during tax time, you know, there can be quite a chunk of money in there.
How much are we talking?
On a particular day, man, it's really shooting in the dark here, we can have a couple hundred thousand dollars in there easily.
So how does it get to the bank?
So the way that we, so our active bank, so let's say we bring in a bunch, people pay property taxes with either cash or check or anything like that, those particular ones we have to physically move from our office over to Wells Fargo, and that's something that...
So what's the procedure for doing that?
So my deputy auditor treasurer, she prepares that information, she counts the numbers, makes sure everything is balancing exactly the way it's supposed to be, she writes out a deposit slip, I bring it over to the bank, they deposit it, they give me a confirmation as well as a copy of the deposit slip that she made, I bring it back and have her review those numbers to make sure they're...
So you take the money to the bank?
That money, yes.
So my question is, what kind of security we got if one person's carrying money of that amount to the bank? Why aren't we having, like, the sheriff send a deputy down when you go over or...
We certainly can, but the checks and balance is that we have multiple people within the process.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about what if somebody robs you on the way?
Yeah.
We don't have no security between the safe up there and the bank, right?
That's true, and if you want us to call down the sheriff, I certainly can. To my knowledge, we've been doing this way for 30, 40 years, but...
Do you think it's good?
Well, historically speaking, it's never not worked.
I think there's probably some debate on the amount of monies that's been taken to banks on a regular basis. I think we're probably going to hear some of that. I wasn't able to be at the public hearing this past Saturday because I was at a funeral, you guys remember that. At this funeral, it just so happened, one of the other people that was there is a driver for the local armored truck company. And I said, "Hey, what do you guys charge? How do you do this thing with moving money around? You know, that's all they do, they carry guns and drive an armored truck, pick up cash and take to banks and vice versa." He said, "Well, I'll have my boss call you." And so the following Monday, he did call me. And so I asked a question, "How do you do that?" He says, "Well, you can either be on a regular schedule, or you just call us, and then we'll come and pick it up." And I said, "Well, how much? What does it cost to do that?" To go from the city-county building with these tamper bags, they call them, so it's a secure thing, when it leaves this building, it's in this tamper bag, gets in the armored truck, goes to Wells Fargo, they make the deposit, and the rest is electronics, right? 20 bucks. So you can't hire, you can't call the sheriff's department over and escort money around, I don't think, for 20 bucks.
So we're carrying $200,000 across the street that I can knock him off, and, "When are you going next time?"
Too late, you missed the shipment.
So anyway, I wanted to point out that there's...
That sounds, I don't know, I don't know what to say.
If that's something that the commission wants... If that's something that the commission wants us to add to our twenty twenty-six agenda, our twenty twenty-six budget, we certainly can.
Does it ever go to a different bank?
Wells Fargo is our active account, that is, that is our, our business, our, our active daily account, so typically, any money that we receive from a tax proceeds, property tax proceeds, it's going to go into that, that account.
No, I, I did mention to the guy, I said, well, that, that seems pretty low, you know, for a couple guys with guns and an armored truck, he says, no, that's not a problem, if it's the city or the county, and at that location, we'll do it for twenty dollars, so I did confirm, but I think we might want to pay him a little bit more than that, you know, can't hardly run a truck for-
I think you need to set that up.
I can certainly reach out to him.
Not for twenty-six, for twenty-five.
Yeah, like most-
Like now.
Like now, so that we have that in place.
Yep, yep, yeah, I can reach out to him, that's not a problem.
Is that safe, locked all the time?
It is, it is locked at the end of every day, yep.
So it's open during the day?
When there's staff right there watching it.
How many people have the combination to it?
Pardon me?
How many people have the combination or access to it?
Only a couple people, and they're all sworn in deputies of the office.
But it's open all the time, during the day?
During the day.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Next, County Finance Director Lee Jacobs, or not?
We're going to split it up.
Okay. Thanks, Senator. So we're not going to call him Lee, we're going to call him Taylor.
All right, so, I'll try to make this kind of quick, because I know only wants to sit and talk about taxes for ten minutes, but what I've got in that packet, the first two pages is straight from the IRS website about the election workers, how there's, they have some special rules for reporting and withholding their taxes, and then the last page is some historical data that I pulled out of our accounting software, but just really quickly to go through the IRS page, the kind of important parts, on that first page, I put a box around at the bottom there, that the IRS comes out right, they make it easy, and they say election workers are common law employees, the definition of a common law employee is just how much control you have over them, so we tell them what to do, when to do it, how to do it, you know, instead of just saying, if we hired an election worker and said, get me the results, you know, by, by election day, you do whatever you want, then they maybe be a contractor, but again, they come out right and say they're employees, now even though they're employees, they have kind of two big special rules here, they, their wages are taxable, but they don't have to have any withholdings like you would normally have for your income taxes, so for income taxes, we don't have to withhold anything for them, and then for FICA, for Social Security and Medicare, as long as they make under an annual threshold, which for twenty-four is twenty-three hundred, I know the number at the bottom of the page there is from twenty-twenty-one, but the twenty-three hundred for twenty-twenty-four, which I believe they always, except for a few office workers, do, they don't have to pay or withhold any FICA taxes, and so then if you go to page two there, in that box kind of on the bottom third of the page, basically because they don't have withholdings, or they're not required to, they do still get W-two's, but only if they make more than six hundred, where your normal employee, they're going to have, you know, even if you make ten dollars, you're going to have some FICA withheld most likely, and so you have to get a W-two, but they get these special rules, I think just to make it easier to hire them, since we do do so many, which I'll show on the next page, and so because of that six hundred threshold, we've kind of historically split our election workers into three buckets, I know we have some county employees that are already employees that do election work, you guys pass a resolution, I think, every election year for those, and I think, depending on how they do it, they can maybe receive election worker pay instead of their pay, and they take some time off, or if they work extra hours, they get election worker pay, and so that pay is just run through HR, included in their paycheck, added to their W-two at the end of the year, the second bucket is the group that makes more than six hundred, so again, those will be the ones that will be required to get W-two's, historically, as I'll show you, they usually got put into HR as a regular employee, they got a regular paycheck, they got a W-two at the end of the year from HR, and then the rest, that threshold of under six hundred, those were typically paid through the auditor's office, so the auditor never brought those people up, they just paid them basically the way we pay any other bill, they just write them a check, there's no tax reporting required, again, just tax reporting, that's all I'm talking about here, and so they're very easy, and that's the large majority, as you'll see, so if you look at that last page, I've kind of broken out the last four elections, and we've actually had four auditors in the last four elections, and so on that top, you'll see the total for twenty eighteen under Auditor Glot, we had three hundred and twenty-two election workers, nine of them made over six hundred, and all nine got their W-two's, and if you look in that next kind of middle group there, those nine were all onboarded, there was actually twelve that were onboarded, but three of them didn't even make the six hundred, we just still sent them W-two's, we just wouldn't have been required to, but so we did all those, and then the three-ten that were paid through the auditor's office, not a single one made more than six hundred, so we weren't required to send them anything, and I don't see any records of us having sent them anything, we could have sent them W-two's or something, but there's nothing in our accounting software, in our drives online, that would show that we sent them anything, and then in twenty twenty, under Auditor Veetmeyer, we had two hundred and seventy-four election workers, now this one was a little different, I think there was more office workers, I know with COVID, the election ran a little differently, so we actually had twenty-six that went over six hundred, but all twenty-six of those did get their W-two's, and that's because we did, if you look onboard forty-three through HR, and then twenty-six of those forty-three made over the six hundred, and again, they all got W-two's, but just the twenty-six were required to, and then we did have two hundred and thirty-one through the auditor's office, and again, not a single one made more than six hundred, so we weren't required to send them anything, now in twenty twenty-two, under Auditor Vetter, we had two hundred and seventy-six election workers, we had twenty-two that made over six hundred, and we only have records that six got W-two's, and those would be the six out of the seven that got onboarded through payroll, through HR, I can't say for certain that we didn't send those sixteen that made over six hundred that were paid through the auditor's office anything, I just, again, in our accounting software and in our drives, I don't see any record of that, but I haven't called them all individually and asked yet, and as far as I'm aware, for twenty twenty-two, I think we've had a complete turnover in the auditor's office, so I don't know if there's anybody left that would even know what we did then, that still works here, and then in twenty twenty-four, under Auditor Sponskowsky, we had three hundred and eleven election workers, we had thirty-five make over six hundred, those thirty-five did all eventually get their tax forms, we did onboard three through HR, so those three got their W-two's regularly through HR, and then we had thirty-two that made over six hundred that were through the auditor's office, and those were the ones that, I believe the auditor sent those W-two's directly for those, and so that's just, I know there's been some talk that we've never done this right, or I know I had sent you an email, that was kind of, there was a piece that maybe out of context, sounds like I'm saying we never did it right, and that was referring to that group through the auditor's office, just that historically, in twenty eighteen and twenty twenty, we've never had to send them anything, we did have that sixteen in twenty twenty-two that, again, I'm not sure for sure whether we did or not, and then this year, those thirty-two were the ones of concern that took a while to get sorted out and get them their tax forms, and, and one thing I guess, you know, you can kind of see, and I know that COVID year was a weird year, but if you look at how many we onboarded, you know, even though we have more going, more than six hundred every year, we're onboarding less every year, and I'm not, I can't say for certain why that is, but that's all I have for you, unless anybody has any questions.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions on that, I appreciate the clarification, because I just, I just recently got an email that somebody copied me on, where, where somebody is still struggling with their, with their, with what they got for W-two's, are you involved?
No, and that was, so I had, I did the ten ninety-nines last year, and this year, I actually have a tax background, so it's something I'm pretty familiar with, you know, sorting through all the payments we make and seeing who would qualify, and that's kind of how I figured this out, is that I noticed they weren't getting tax forms, but again, the auditor's office, I believe, has been handling those thirty-two, if there was a problem with one of those first three, that would be through HR, but the other thirty-two were sent directly from the auditor's office.
Okay. I'll, I'll figure out who's, who's having the problem, but we, we made a decision prior to this, that if, if you are one of those election workers that's experiencing additional expenses or something with preparing your taxes, that we would be compensating for those additional costs, we're not going to be in the business of doing people's taxes for them, but if, if this thing is causing you trouble, just let us know, and we'll ask for, you know, obviously, information or a bill or, you know, some proof of the expense, but we want to make sure that the election workers are taken care of, so, thank you, Taylor. Oh, one other thing, what's the penalties for all these late?
So I don't have them off the top of my head, but I know there's, there's basically different kind of thresholds, so I think there was a deadline, I think if you were one month late, and then there's a bigger chunk now, where after your one month, as long as you're, I think, is it six months till August, but then there's kind of a, a different penalty where if the IRS determines you've been, I believe it's willfully negligent, then it's a much higher penalty, I think it's six hundred and sixty, and it's, the way it's written is it's per document, so we're required to send the election worker a W-two, but then we're also required to send the IRS a W-two, because sometimes you might do half of that right and not do the other half, so I believe the penalty is two times that number for those thirty-two that were late.
Okay, because I, I just looked it up briefly, and it looked like there was a sixty dollar per, per W-two for that first, like, January thirty-first deadline, and then I think it was something around a hundred and thirty after the next deadline, which I think has already passed, and then the willful negligence or willful disregard, I think, what, what I read is this is two thousand dollars per, so if there's thirty-two of them, well-
Well, and the other, and the other thing there, and I'm not, I don't have all the numbers in front of me, is I know it also, it can get worse depending on how much the wages are, so they can also assess a portion of the wages, you know, a multiplier there, so it's kind of, you don't know for sure what you're in for until they, until they send you the letter, so.
I see.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Whitcox.
A friend of mine called me too, and was concerned, first they were concerned they didn't get anything, and that was the middle of March or something, but by the end of March, we apparently had sent out the W-two's to those thirty-two people, correct?
Yeah, as far as I'm, again, the auditor's office sent those out, so I'm not sure exactly when they got them.
Okay, then she called me again and said, yeah, I got another one, I got another W-two on a different year, is that possible?
Well, I think what happened is the initial W-two's were sent on the twenty twenty-five form, and so then we had to issue kind of corrections so, so that they wouldn't report it in twenty twenty-five, and then send them a twenty-four W-two, but again, if I got something wrong, I'm not sure the auditor-
So they potentially could have two, two amended returns?
Yeah, if they, depending on how they handled it, you know, I know if, if someone disregarded it, you know, saved it for next year, something like that, yeah, I'm not sure.
My main concern is election workers are hard to find, and they're, we want to keep them, and we try and pay them as much as we can, and we keep messing this up like this, and they're not going to come back, that's what bothers me, so, thank you.
Thanks, Senator. Next, County Finance Director Buckland.
Chair Bitner and Commissioners, I apologize, I did not get this item in the packet, but if you would please refer to the packet that, that Taylor handed out, it's got general fund revenues on the front page and page one, or should be page one, so this is a year-end sort of wrap-up, we did complete the year-end process, closing the books, and so I'd like to, to quickly run through some of the highlights, and maybe, well, definitely, we will get a, a written analysis of some kind that gets into the detail on a fund level, my thought was maybe that would be more appropriate around the budget time, and also to just buy some time, frankly, to get it done, so on page one, we have general fund revenues, the one change you're going to notice is the addition of the one cent sales tax, we earned almost three million dollars in the months of November and December, so the, the accounting standards require that we book that revenue the month it's collected by the merchant, and however, these funds are restricted by the Home Rule Charter until twenty twenty-six, so they're going to show up in revenue, but they're not going to be something we can use until a, a later year, what I did is I removed the one cent for comparability in the second line, and so you can see the changes from the prior year, biggest change was increase to property tax revenues of six million, this was decided during the preliminary and final budget hearings of twenty twenty-three, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, next biggest change was interest earnings, and we'll get into a little more detail on some of these, interest earnings increased partly because we're comparing with the prior year, and the prior year was, was low, just because some of the investment decisions we made had a lower yield, and so this year, our money markets increased significantly, and so by comparison, and also because of the increase, we, we ended up with a significant increase in interest, or up and over last year, the next item is inmate board, charges for, it's a charge for services, obviously, it's out of the county jail, the biggest increase there was the, the US government inmates that we've been housing, and also I think we've got some more interest from other counties, and also the city of Bismarck, the next item was a homestead credit, that was a, a change in the homestead credit law, I think, that took effect last year, and that's also tied to our levy, and then another item that I wanted to call out specifically was a decrease in social services revenue, this was a, it's an indirect cost reimbursement that we get through the state, they changed the law, I think, last year, and also, basically, it was widely, counties were doing it wrong, just widely doing it wrong to our benefit, it wasn't, it wasn't just us, it was a lot of different counties, I think, misunderstood, and we're getting overpaid by the state, and that, so the state, it's, I think it was some cleanup, and then just said, okay, look, no harm, no foul, from this point forward, we're going to do it, you know, the, the right way, so we were getting, we were kind of inadvertently double dipping, but as I said, it was widespread, but the, the thing I wanted to note about this is, this is like a permanent decrease, and so the past two years, we were getting about eight hundred thousand, and it's, it's down to four hundred now, and that's going to be ongoing, so that's something that we need to just be aware of going into the budget cycle, moving on to, and I would also, I struggle to understand that whole concept, and so if it's something that you'd like a little more information on, I can reach out to the business manager at Social Services, she really understands this stuff, I've asked her like three times, so I would, I would know that she understands it, so this page two is, is just kind of more of the same, this is, this is showing a three-year sort of comparative on our general fund revenues, and then the second chart there is, is zooming in on those last two columns, the change from twenty-three to twenty-four, and offering some comments, I don't think I have a whole lot to call out there, but if you have any, other than what I just said, but if you have any questions about that, we can come back to that, page three is the general fund expenditures, so the biggest change here, our, our expenditures increased by nearly, by actually, just over twelve percent, and the, the biggest change here was to salaries and fringe, and that was essentially, the biggest part of that was the public safety component, which is most of what the county does, is public safety and roads, and so this is again, comparing with the prior year, we had in total a three million dollar increase in salary and fringe, of which two point three six was public safety, state's attorney saw an eighteen percent increase, detention saw twelve, and sheriff saw ten, and I would attribute these mostly to hiring additional staff, especially on the state's attorney side, I understood that they were in, in dire need of new staff, and so it looks like we've, we've staffed up here, the other two items, we had contracted services with a six hundred thousand dollar increase, part of that is the CO2 pipeline lawsuit, that was a significant amount of that, and then the other part was, it was a little bit of reclassifying, kind of for financial statement purposes, and just to clean up the data a little bit, so it's just kind of moved from, kind of moving money from our right pocket to our left pocket, it's, it's, we're not any richer or any poorer, but it, it improves our data a little bit, we also had a building maintenance line item that related to the boiler, the courthouse boiler, we started construction on that a little bit early, just because we needed to get it done, so the next, next page is again, a, a three-year comparative on the general fund expenditures, again, if anybody wants to, to dig into that, we can, I did call out the highlights just in the previous page, and then page five is the same presentation, we're just, just zooming in on the change in the general fund expenditures, and I wanted to also kind of delve into highway a little bit, just because it's our other big function, we do public safety and we do roads, and that's, that's about, that's the, the majority of what we do, and so for highway, I didn't want to get too deep in the weeds because I, I know that Marcus has a really good understanding of this stuff, and I'm sure this will come up at some point, but what I did here is I took the prior three years on page six of, of revenues, and then I pulled out some of the special one-time payments that we get, you know, we get, we got prairie dog, we got a snow removal grant, a legacy fund, ARPA, so I just pulled those out for comparability, and put that on a line that I've called our core revenues, and when I look at that, I, I think it's pretty flat, I mean, it goes up, it goes down, we're about, twenty twenty-four is about the average of twenty-two and twenty-three, so I think that's probably okay, we did come down a little bit from last year, but we're still up from twenty twenty-two, we have nearly thirteen million in core highway revenues, some of the changes are an increase to interest earnings, there's some reasons for that, that we don't need to get into unless somebody wants to, but it's slightly more complicated than just the increase, we also have a, a line item for permits and fees, that showed an increase, it's stuff like load pass permits and things like that, we've just got an awful lot more this year, sale of assets- Sale of assets had an increase. And then two items, we saw a decrease in charges for services. We saw a significant decrease in other miscellaneous revenue of, a decrease of 700,000. And frankly, I just, this miscellaneous account had just a lot of stuff in it last year. And I, I kind of struggle with this because some of that probably we need to, I mean, we, meaning I, need to work with the auditor's office and the highway to break out some of those items so that they have their own line item. But it is truly miscellaneous and that's not giving us very good data. When you have a swing from 800,000 to 100,000, that's just, I, I struggle with that. But I think we can pull out some items and then we'll have line items that are flat and a couple that swing. But, but it kind of makes sense. The roadwork and stuff is really cyclical and it makes sense to me that we might see a decrease in that because a lot of that is, as you can see here, it's political subs. So if townships are feeling a little bit of a squeeze financially, they may not request maintenance work from us. And with the increase in costs, I could see, you know, generally increased costs, I could see why that number might go down. On the expenditure side, we again have some pretty big swings here. It's project-driven, so in '23, we had 19 million in expenditures and we're down to 13.5. Obviously, there were some projects that were going on in '23 that caused the increase, planned projects. And you can see that down below, the county work expenditure line item is down by about 6 million, which is about the amount that our overall costs are down. We did have an increase in some other items, maintenance and, and increase in machinery and equipment. And one item I wanted to call out is the gravelling and crushing. It shows up on the expenditure side as a decrease, but actually, we crushed a ton of gravel last year. And what's happening is it's, it's going to inventory. So the cost of it is going to inventory. And when, and the way we make the entry work is by decreasing the expenditure. But that, that cost goes to inventory. And then when we, when we use the gravel on a job, it's a cost of goods sold. So it gets, your inventory gets expensed as it's used. Had a good conversation with Commissioner Schwab earlier about the, the gravelling and crushing. And it's just, it's a, it's a real asset to the county, literally and figuratively. The next item is one that I wanted to spend a little bit of time on, which is on page eight, we have the fund balances and that's AKA our reserves. I, I highlighted an item, which is the general fund unrestricted fund balance, which is commonly, as I just said, we refer to that as our reserves. And if you look to the far-right column, or the second to the far-right, we saw an increase in reserves of 3.75 million from January 1st of this year to December 31st. So January 1st, we had 16.6 million in reserves and that increased to 20.3, 20.4 by the end of the year. So what happened here to, you know, dramatically increase our reserves is that at the end, at the 2024 budget hearings, which were held in 2023, the county commission voted to increase the general fund property taxes by 6.6 million over fiscal year 2022. So of this 6.6 million increase, we now have 3.7 million left over. The rationale behind the property tax increase was that the county was undertaxing and/or was using reserves and, and this activity was unsustainable. So that's, that was the messaging from both the preliminary budget hearing and the final budget hearing that you, the county commission, were hearing from your chief financial officer. The, the problem is this was not accurate. So to kind of understand this, this rationale, we, we need to go back at least to the 2023 preliminary budget hearing from July 19th, 2023. So this, as I mentioned, this budget hearing was related to the fiscal year 2024 budget, which is the year that we just completed, that we're now discussing. The preliminary budget memo was dated July 19th, 2023 and was signed by the deputy finance director at the time and auditor treasurer Swanskowski. The concerning paragraph to me is on page two of the preliminary budget memo and it reads, quoting here, "As we have discussed over the last six months, the 2023 budget included a use of 5,500,000 of reserve funds to be used to balance the budget for ongoing operational costs. This is an unsustainable activity and with our current general fund reserves below 40%, it is recommended that we cannot utilize reserve funds again this year to cover that $5,500,000 of the $8,395,966 increase." So I think this paragraph should be taken in two parts. The first part states, "The 2023 budget included a use of 5,500,000 of reserve funds to be used to balance the budget. This is an unsustainable activity." So firstly, the, the year was more than half over at the time that this was written. And the actual expenditures in the general, in the general fund halfway through the payroll year, because most of our expenditures are payroll. So at our 13th of '26 pay periods, which happened coincidentally to be June 30th, our actual expenditures in the general fund were 13.9 million halfway through the year. And these reports that I'm referencing were available at the time that preliminary budget memo was written. It's, this is not a case of looking back in hindsight. So just a simple extrapolation of 13.9 times two gets us to 27.8 million at year-end. We actually finished the year spending 28.2 million in the general fund. So this was a fairly accurate, albeit simplistic extrapolation. Budgeted revenues for 2023 were about 27.5 million. So therefore, the difference from 27.8 to 27.5, 27.8 the extrapolated expenditures, 27.5 the budgeted revenues is $300,000. It's a far cry from 5.5 million. And so there's just no justification for calling a budget shortfall of this magnitude unsustainable in the preliminary budget memo. In fact, the county could sustain using $300,000 in reserves for quite a few years before requiring a tax increase. So that's issue number one that I, that I have with, with the memo. The second issue is, is the second part of the paragraph that reads, quote, "With our current general fund reserves below 40%, it is recommended that we cannot use reserve funds again this year." So this is yet another inaccurate statement. Our current general fund reserves, which were known at the time, were just over 51%. So for our general fund reserves to go from just over 51% to below 40% would amount to about $3.7 million in reserves.
Can I ask a quick question? So those two years, we actually missed our budget by taxing, taxing too much. Is that correct?
We have, so in, in those two years, '23 and '24, are those the two years you're referring to?
Right.
So in '23, we had a budget deficit. We budgeted, I think, 32 million in expenditures and the budgeted revenues were 27.5 million. So we had a budget deficit.
And how did we provide for that? How, what did we do?
Well, on paper, reserves.
Okay.
Just because you have to have, you have to balance your budget. So on paper, it was reserves. But in fact, we'd never spent $32 million up to, in the general fund up to that point in time. And so I, I think rather than, the language to, to say that we're, you know, that, that this included a use of $5,500,000, we're halfway through the year. We, we know we're not going to use $5,500,000. There's no way because the year's half gone and we didn't use, we could only maybe possibly spend the rest of, you know, of the year down. But there's no way to spend the first half of the year, it's, it's already happened. So I think it was an issue of that not being explained, that hey, we've got this on paper. It's probably not going to happen. You know, this five and a half million dollar deficit is, it's really just a paper deficit. And, and/or maybe we need to tighten up our budgeting a little bit to close the gap a little bit between what we're appropriating and what we think we're actually going to use. I'm not sure why the gap, I, I don't know historically what the budget deficit has been. I'm not quite sure why it grew to that level. Cass has a similar thing going on, Cass County, and I, I think the finance director explains that and says, look, it's on paper, we've got reserves if necessary, but we're probably not going to spend that. And that was the piece that was missing here was, we're really probably not going to spend that, five and a half million. And so I think we missed, if we missed something, it was probably the budgeting. We probably didn't budget close enough to what we were realistically going to spend. And we also missed explaining that we're really not going to spend that. And then for 2024, I guess, could you help me understand the, the question as the two years?
Well, I know there's two years in a row where we, I think, and I've said this before, we overtaxed the taxpayers by 3.7 and 4.1, but the total, the two years was $8 million that we overtaxed what we really needed. Am I correct in that?
I, I, not, not exactly because the, the year where the, the tax increase happened in, in taxed, in fiscal year 2024. So it was a tax increase of 6.6 million in the general fund. We did need some of that, as we just discussed. We had a real public safety need that we, was met in part by the, well, in full by the tax increase. And so some of that was needed, but not all of it. That's why we're seeing a 3.7 million. So I think if you need a number, you know, maybe 4 million would be, you know, accurate, overtaxed by four or by 3.7, but it's not eight. Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not that, that bad. And then this year, we held, you know, numbers flat and we're, you know, again, have this continued public safety obligation that's being met, I think, by, by these budgets. But I, I'm kind of focused on the messaging because I think there was a real message that was not, not accurate. As to this, this reserve calculation, current reserves of less than 40%, you know, essentially what's going on is the, the auditor's preliminary budget memo, which was again, you know, delivered at the final budget hearing. It understates our reserves by 3.7 million. So basically, we're saying we have 3.7 million less than we actually have. We need to raise taxes to replenish this miss, you know, this 3.7 million that's gone. And Commissioner Schwab, that, that may be where this figure of 3.7 million comes from. I know you've mentioned it a couple of times. You know, there's certainly other issues that we've talked about, like with, you know, accounts being double-counted and things like that, that have come out of our financial statement audit. But it's, that number 3.7, this, this may be where it's coming from. But this was the environment in which this commission was operating in, in fiscal year 2023. And so, you know, as we just said, it's, it was resulted in this, in this surplus at year-end that we've, that we've got.
My concern is that, my concern is that, that 3.7 was in '24. But I think that carries forward into '25 now. I think that same thing. And so that's where the little confusion about the amounts is coming in because the same information was provided for '25. So is that a fair statement?
Yeah, so in '25, we had the same, you know, budget deficit discussion. I mean, yeah, because, because we increased the, the taxes and then held it flat, it's, it's essentially, you know, happening again in '25. But I think at this point, it, it's probably going to actually just be adequate to, to cover the, the expenditures. I, I think we've talked about this, Chair Bittner, we, I kind of doubt we'll have, I don't think we'll be increasing our reserves at the end of 2025 by very much just because of this public safety stuff that we added in '24. That's carrying forward to '25 too. So I do think it's, that where we're at now is, is going to be adequate for 2025 under, under the, you know, all things being equal.
What was our general fund budget at the end of '24, ballpark?
I think it was 35, wasn't it?
35 million?
I think for '24, fiscal year '24, I think the general fund was 35. I think it was 32 to 35. And now it's at 40, but there's a lot of transfers.
A lot of changes since that time, I know.
Yeah, yeah, and some of that 40 that were.
And what percent is that of our total budget?
I think it's about, this year, I think it's about half.
50%?
I think so, yeah, yeah. Or at least of the total appropriation because we are appropriating for other entities. You know, we're, we're appropriating for the state hospital and stuff like that. So I'm just thinking about the, the big budget memo that we have, our budget that we've got on the webpage. So, and then just in, in conclusion about this reserves thing, you know, this, as I just mentioned, this, this budget memo, that continued, the, the negative messaging continued into the final budget hearing. And this was several months later than the preliminary and we had even more information available that we were not going to spend, you know, all of this money. Because we were, you know, nearly two-thirds, three-fourths of the way through the year at the final budget. And so the extrapolation should be more accurate at that point to say, no, we're probably going to finish at 28, not 32 million. But we, we continue to see the same message. And just to, you know, remind everyone, we talked about this earlier, last year, we finished 2023 spending about $133,000 in reserves. So that was a lot of information. Does anybody have any questions before I go on to the last page? So on page 15, I have, I've added the fiscal year 2024 ending cash balance in the, in the general fund. I really wanted to focus on this because there's a couple of issues that this tells me. You can see on page 15 that the general fund cash balance at year-end is negative. Now, we do fund accounting and so each fund is self-balancing. And therefore, we probably have 20 or 30 million in Wells Fargo at the end of the year. We, we have a lot of, of money in the bank. It's not that our bank account is negative, but we do fund accounting. And so each fund has its own share of the bank account. And at the end of this year, the general fund was negative by approximately one-half, a half of a million dollars. So the reason that the balance is negative is because at year-end, the county had negative cash balances in several funds that totaled over $5 million. Again, bank balance is positive, but some of our funds have this negative cash balance. And so from an accounting perspective, when cash is negative, it becomes a liability, exactly like an overdrawn bank account. And so then what, what we do in those cases is we do something called a reclassifying journal entry, where we move the negative cash from the asset side of the ledger to the liability side of the ledger. And so to correct, to correct the issue this year, we reclassified the negative cash in these various funds as a due-to or a loan from the general fund. And then we took those negative cash balances and moved them to the general fund to reflect the fact that the general fund spent the cash and the negative funds borrowed it. Now, in reality, probably every fund that had positive cash spent the cash because we didn't track it. We had no formalized agreement between these funds, similar to the agreement we have in the health insurance fund, where the health insurance has borrowed money from the general fund. But we didn't have any formal agreement, so from an accounting perspective, we said, you know, we're just going to say the general fund spent it because somebody had to spend it. And so by making that entry, then we can see at the end of the year that the general fund has a negative balance. And this was something that the, this commission voted on, was to correct these negative cash balances. And I believe it came up in our, in our audit report as well. And so, you know, the, the existence. report as well. And so, you know, the, the existence of over $5 million of negative cash balances at year end, to me, that indicates a breakdown in the treasurer function within Burley County. And this breakdown is, it's consistent with other issues we've seen in investments. For example, allowing cash to sit uninvested for long periods, or allowing checks to go undeposited for days or weeks. I might add to that a safe that's unlocked, maybe excessive cash deposits. Those are all, you know, a breakdown within that treasurer function. And so the, the Finance Department has tried unsuccessfully to work with Auditor Swanskowski on fixing the negative cash issue for over a year. You know, to be fair, at the beginning, we may have started the conversation with, just with the deputy. I don't recall. So it may have been a couple of months before Auditor Swanskowski was, you know, brought into the conversations. I simply don't recall. But I know that we had emails a year ago about this issue. You know, the commission voted, as I said, on August 5th to fix these negative cash balances. And since that vote, the Finance Department has made numerous attempts to fix the negative cash balance in just one account. And I went and counted the emails that I had on this one account since August 29th, when I, you know, sent the email, the first, well, the first email after the August 5th meeting, August 29th. It took 66 emails and three and a half months to fix just one account. But even after all that, the Auditor's Office refused to adopt the Finance Department's recommendation. They instead devised their own way to address the negative balance in the account, which caused other issues that we're currently dealing with, which we said would be issues on August 29th. They said if you, you know, when we fix this, we will have these other issues. Those other issues have not been dealt with. So the, the, the part of the breakdown in the treasurer's function is just kind of a general ineffectiveness that turns, what really should just be a journal entry, into this long, drawn-out process that even at the end of this, I think we had to spend quite a few hours fixing that one journal entry, and then come to the end of the, of the year, and there's 14 other funds with negative cash balances. So that's what I have on the year end, and I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions. If anybody wants to go back to some of those earlier pages, that would be, that would be fine.
So we got to item number seven, public hearing regarding plan on redesignating elective office of Burley County Auditor Treasurer to a point of office. And as I've done before, I'm going to turn that part over to the Vice Chair, Bobbakin.
Thank you, Chairman Bittner. Once again, this is a public hearing concerning the redesigning of elective office of Burley County Auditor Treasurer to an appointed office. Anybody who is interested in the century code, there's handouts by the door with summary of duties, education experience requirements for Auditor Treasurer, from other North Dakota counties as well, public hearing guidelines, all meetings are recorded. Must be a Burley County resident to speak. One topic for discussion, no discussion on previous home rule charters or other positions. Five-minute time limit. Speakers cannot yield time to another person. Try not to repeat what was already stated. If you have provided comments at a previous public hearing, please allow others an opportunity to speak. Speakers, please sign in and provide a comment at the podium, print legibly. Also, make sure that you state that you are a resident of Burley County. Please be respectful and courteous. Hecklers are, and inappropriate behavior will be removed by law enforcement. This is our finally, final public hearing pertaining to this. However, public input is still available on the Burley County website at www.burley.gov. So this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record, and sign at the podium.
There's two of them up here. Is there a difference between the two of them?
Um, I can't hear.
Just fill out the one for public hearing for this.
Yeah, the public hearing one.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Diane Zun. I am a resident of Burley County. I just wanted to start just with, before I make my comments. I have tried to watch most of the meetings. I'm in detail, but, you know, time kind of gets away from you. I was unable to watch the one on March 29th. It didn't seem to be published out on your website at this time, so I, it didn't have the link on there. But I don't know if that's just something you guys might want to check into. So with that in mind, you know, not being able to watch everything, just kind of keep that in mind as I make my comments. So it is my understanding that your resolution would give the majority of this commission the ability to change this position to appointed, which would negate the opportunity for Burley County citizens to vote on this matter unless we would obviously have a petition. I kept delaying the meeting in hopes that just, the commission would just come to their senses and just say, let's just make it to the vote of the people. And, and really, it just follows what my understanding of what the Home Rule Charter had said, and then we could just be done, because it seems like everybody's pretty divided. And so putting it to a vote would be what the citizens of Burley County would want. I understand that there are differing opinions between how citizens of the county view this, and that is what makes our country great, our differing opinions. We're better people to have the ability to discuss and debate, and that's why the devoters should get to make this decision. If a majority of the county decides that appointed is the best, then we make the best of that choice. Just a few key points I wanted to mention is that I don't, I just don't feel that I have heard a valuable argument from the commission advocating to move this to, from elected to appointed. I just, I hear references of, I have this stack of paper, the auditor did this or that. But I just continually see comments pointed at the current auditor. And so what I would like to see before any decision is made, and maybe you guys will put that together with the committee that you guys are developing, is a bullet point presentation that provides a real clear argument that I would want to say to myself, yes, what you're presenting, that I can see that what you're advocating for to make this appointed makes sense. And I just don't feel at this time I have been presented that information. The one statement, again, that I've heard repeatedly is that the, the job qualifications are really important. And I think the, the path, kind of doesn't make sense what I have written here, but the path that you've taken to just address this issue with some of the maybe shortcomings of what's happening, it, it now has just come across to the citizens of the county that it's just attack-based, instead of, now we're just kind of cleaning up the mess that we've created, when it just seems like it could have been done better. But I think maybe you, you just lose, use it as a learning lesson for what can be done better in the future. So as you proceed to, to go with the appointed, hired, whatever you guys want to call it, it seems that overall, our county, the people working for our county are maybe not necessarily, or that they are inexperienced and, and, and they are unqualified. So I'm just not sure how you think if you appoint someone that you're going to change that, other than you just fire them if they're not qualified. I also believe that just because you have a college degree, does not magically make you competent. I am an advocate that training is incredibly important to a person to succeed in a position. At a, a prior meeting, and they had changed, one of the public hearings, they had addressed a change in the Finance Department, that there are folks with CPAs and whatnot, and I believe that's under the control of the commission, that you guys oversee that. They have found the errors, and they have become a check and balance for the auditor. So why does there need to be a change if we've already put something in place to try to catch those errors? And then by keeping our auditor elected, it therefore gives the, us as residents, our ability for him to be our check and balance outside of that. Just wrapping up here as quick as I can, the first meeting, I just wanted to address a comment from Commissioner Woodcox. And I mean, I understand that it wasn't, you pair possibly your intent, but in, in insinuation to the residents of Burley County that we were not competent enough to be able to elect a person for this position. Now, I will not disagree with anybody who says that a lot of voters don't do their due diligence before they vote, but I would think a lot of people would take into account the qualifications of somebody when they're running for that position. I don't think most residents would pick a person who's 18 that has no experience. And even if we did, and you give them a chance, then we have the right to remove them from that position. And then in the Sterling meeting, it was also, also referenced about the qualifications of the state auditor as compared to the county auditor. And that, again, Commissioner, you had stated that they needed to have auditing background. Well, I did a little bit of research, and based on what I found that is false. To run for state office, you have to be 25 years age, 25 years old, a citizen of the United States, and you have to have been a resident in North Dakota for five years. This applies to the Secretary of State, the state auditor, treasurer, insurance commissioner, egg commissioner, public service commissioner, and tax commissioner. And the only exception that being the Attorney General, which follows those eligibility requirements, plus they have to be licensed in North Dakota to practice law. So not even our state-elected officials in these high-capacity positions don't require that kind of education. So I think the reason is because then it holds them accountable to the people. If I am mistaken in that, but that was based on the research I had found. And then in addition to, and I think is important when you are looking for somebody that is qualified to complete a position, even our, our state's attorney within our own county, and I don't know this for sure, but they are required to have a law degree. But does it require, as voters, that that person has a law degree in government? Because it's probably a lot different. It would be no different than a CPA, that you can work for a multimillion-dollar corporation, and doing government accounting is so completely different. I've done both, and it is completely different. So just because you know one doesn't mean that you know the other. So I just think that, oh, let me find my spot here. You just, you have to have the skill set to do the job. Nobody likes mistakes, especially when it costs me as a taxpayer more. But that's the reason why accounting records are audited and then therefore corrected. And I would also hope that anybody that comes into an elected position would have enough support from their staff, who may be more trained in that area, to help them make the correct decisions. Maybe, you know, then why are they there if they're not there to help the person who may not know exactly what they're doing? In closing, I'm glad I waited to speak at this last meeting. My outlook has changed a bit. I initially thought that this was a personal attack on the auditor. But he holds this position until 2027 regardless of his performance. And for his future, the, the dirty laundry that's been exposed probably doesn't look very good. I do have faith, this is, this commission has put the Burley County residents in your best interest. But with that said, what happens when you're not here and there's different commissioners? What if their motivation changes? And the way to have that accomplished is by having the county finances looked at independently by the people of Burley County. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward, sign in at the podium. State your name for the record and whether or not you're a Burley County resident, please.
My name is Desiree Hillborn, and I am a Burley County resident. First, in full disclosure, you all know me. I am an employee of Burley County. I do work for the HR department. My specialty in the HR department is I'm Assistant Risk Manager, and I also work on job descriptions and compensation. I would like to make a point today, simply that the way that the auditor slash treasurer position is set up, set up Mark Swanskowski to fail. That particular position was combined under Kevin Glat. He had many, many years of experience, even before that position was, was combined. Mark has been put into a situation where it would be difficult for anyone to excel, even if they came in with experience from the private sector or anything like that. I simply want to ask the commission to look at separating the two positions as Julie Lawyer, or State's Attorney, I'm really nervous, State's Attorney Julie Lawyer suggested, and look at separating the two positions, so we can have the expert working on the treasurer and finance area, but allow the people of Burley County to still have the say and be able to have input as far as the election of the auditor. What's going on between the auditor's office and other different departments and the county commission has been a huge detriment to many offices in Burley County. I can't tell you how many times I have to interrupt my regular work in order to do open records requests and respond to this. That affects many other departments, not just HR. So I would like to encourage the commission to look at doing a separation of the duties. It's like splitting the baby. I mean, you're going to be able to have happy people on both sides. And that's what I would really ask you guys to do and to consider. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Sign in at the podium. State your name for the record, please.
Clint Fielan, Double Ditch, North Dakota. So I think, because we've heard so many things from different people, audience, commissioners, I think we need to take a minute and we need to look at history. What is the history of the Burley County Auditor's Office and their relationship with the commission? You know, it's kind of funny, but it, it almost was back 100 years old, 100 years ago, back in September of '37, we had an auditor that got away evidently with almost $1,800. Was asked to resign, and he did. We get into modern times a little bit. In 1976, we had an auditor, Ken Harlow, that evidently didn't get the county's financial standing in order, kind of a he said, she said, he didn't have all the information. So they asked him to resign because he didn't get his report done. He didn't resign. The commission had no power to get rid of him. He finished out his term, but he wasn't reelected in 1978. I guess I wasn't paying attention to the Auditor's Department back in '76, but I am now. Going, fast forwarding a little bit, during the time of Kevin Glat, it was, it was mentioned, and actually, I should throw in there, these two offices were merged, the treasurer and auditor. And I've been told, maybe some different people, but I've been told by the Burley County Commission in the past, that when you had a disagreement with staff and brought it here, generally, the people on this board like to say to listen to staff. And I listened to a staff member just now, and what she said, ab- And I listened to a staff member just now, and what she said, absolutely, I agree with. Back in November of '98, it was decided that the offices would be merged. And I kind of agree with her that it seems like that's a problem now. It really does. When you look back, the treasurer's position, you're looking for, so with all the problems going on, do you really think you're going to hire a magic employee to fill these two roles? I mean, there's quite a list of things. Splitting those two seats apart, those two positions apart, clearly could provide you with two more thoroughly experienced people, might bring some different players into play that currently aren't looking at it. Getting back to Kevin Glatte, though, and this is all very relevant, Burley County, 2019, June of 2019, was considering making this an appointed position. It was stated that Kevin, at one of those public hearings, when he retired, he didn't retire. When I was listening to that, that didn't sound right to me. Kevin resigned, and it was very shortly after that discussion in '98 about, 2019, excuse me, Kevin Glatte resigned a short time later. So, and he never really did give a reason why he resigned, but he did. And in the meantime, you had Clyde Thompson, who didn't want the seat because he was retiring. You had Al Weitmeyer, that sat in there in term. Evidently, he didn't want it. We end up fast-forwarding to now, and you hear in a lot of these elected positions that it's the office. It's beyond you people. Have respect for the office. And it appears to me, we've had some headstrong, kind of some headbutting that's gone on here, plenty of blame to go all the way around, but it would appear that the agenda of this commission since 2019 has been to make that appointed position. It's already failed in the election, and we keep talking about qualifications. If that's our reason that we're going to appoint this is because of qualifications, then I guess I challenge, what about the state's attorney's position? There's maybe some excellent candidates that don't want to go through an election. Maybe we should have it appointed? You might get all kinds of people. How about a sheriff? We, I mean, open it up. There's probably a lot of very fine law enforcement administrators that might come along. I'll even take it a step farther than that. What are your qualifications? Maybe, possibly, do we have the governor's office? Appoint your positions. Where do we take this? When do we start or stop becoming America? We're not a democracy, but we always hear about democracy, democracy, democracy. Our vote to pick an auditor, that's true democracy right there. And when I hear things like age, that's childish. I know some excellent, very skilled people that are teens or early twenties that have accomplished a lot, and I grant it, the percentage-wise, maybe it isn't a lot, but I can throw on the other side of the spectrum. I know some people in their 80s that are just qualified and fine. Warren Buffett traded stocks until his 90s, till he started moving things over to other people. But I really question if we're going to have age and all these qualifications, maybe some of you fit or don't fit the qualifications or positions you're in. So I kind of question that. Going down the line, so much that we hear, I question SOPs, standard operating procedures. So we have some things, we have some different job titles. You've been working on job descriptions for the office's replacement. Instead of spending that time, and instead of everybody casting these stones back and forth, what about communications? And I challenge, whether it's your positions or any office in Burley County, is it time to sit down, brush off job descriptions, and maybe some standard operating procedures? We talk about this vault, and I went all the way back to '37, pulling up auditors, different little clips and stories. What was a standard operating procedure? You know, I don't know if we're throwing that in to pick on Mark. I think Mark's made a lot of mistakes. I've had crosswords with Mark over things that took place out at land I own, when they come out in the sess. They showed up at my place unannounced. They don't, they don't need a law, or the law is on their side. They don't need my permission. I guess permission, to me, had nothing to do with it. The state that I was raised in and live in, we had respect for one another. We would maybe make a courtesy call, or maybe send a note in the mail that we're going to be out at your place on Tuesday assessing. So I'm not here sticking up for Mark. I'm sticking up for the seat. But I challenge you, what is the standard operating procedure in the auditor's office with the vault? And if you're picking on him, what was Kevin Glatte's procedure? What was the guy back in '37? What was his procedure? So if you don't have an SOP, if I'm going to cast stones, I've been involved in business. If I'm going to cast stones, I better have a procedure, right? So where is that procedure? So the communication thing, you know, the very building we're in, we, the county needs to get out, because we have these problems with the city. Well, 20 years later, we build a health department that the city owns, that now the county's going to run the health department in their building. So there's lots of culpability going on right here, right here. I tell you, once in a while, a little self-reflection, and a little analyzing, and communications. So it should be nothing special for this board to have a joint meeting with Bismarck, or with City of Bismarck. We keep hearing about this county administrator. Maybe we should have a county administrator. Maybe it should be an elected position. And maybe that county administrator should hold all of you accountable. Maybe we need another checkpoint here. I'm all about, sounds to me like we've got $800,000 in miscellaneous accounts that now is $100,000. We really need to work on putting that in different columns. We overtaxed the public. We're not sure. Could have been 3.7, could have been 5.5. These numbers are getting thrown around. I'm glad that they're not giving these reports to the IRS right now, because this doesn't sound very good to me. It sounds like a lot of incompetent people are not a procedure to follow. So this is a heck of a lot bigger than just Mark. And, you know, I don't know. You make this thing become an appointed position, maybe we can finally get some people to actually come out and want to vote, and maybe we can replace some other positions in this county. I don't know. But I don't think having less elected positions is going to fix any problem, and to bring somebody in to fill that role right now, sounds like a real mess. So maybe the new, and I've got the figure somewhere, $160,000 with benefits, our building director. We've got a new building director that just got hired. Maybe we should have spent that $160,000 hiring somebody for the treasurer's office or the auditor's office. Just some observations. I hope nobody takes this personally, because this is about Burley County, and it's about us taxpayers and residents of Burley County, and it's about doing the right thing. And I think that we all expect our professionals that we hire to run our county and elect to run our county, to be able to communicate and do the right thing. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fielan. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. State your name for the record. Sign in at the podium, please.
Marlon Hawk, Hawkinson is the name, Burley County resident, have been for a number of years. I'm listening to some of the comments, and they made me change some of the comments that I was going to make. Anybody that's in statistics, no personal front taken back here, but one of the first things that Eskie Solberg, and maybe some of you remember him way back when, he was my economics professor at VJC. And one of the first things he told us in class was, "Statistics don't lie, but statisticians They can make, they come up with the answer, and then they make the facts, the statistics fit their answer. So the gentleman right before me reminded me of that story. And I have to go back in history a bit, for those of you that were not alive even when I was city commissioner, mayor, and on this board for 16 years. When I was mayor, they had a flow chart up on the wall, and it said the mayor's the chief. The commissioners are on the next line below that. And the department heads below that, yeah. I said, "Well, wait a minute. That isn't the way I operate. That isn't the way government should operate. The citizens are the boss. They tell us what they would like to see done. It's called the will of the people." So I had that flow chart changed. I put the citizens of Bismarck on the top of the list. When I look at this present situation going on here, I didn't vote for Mark. I told him a couple of weeks ago that I voted for him. I wanted him to believe that. But I look at this as kind of a personal attack on an individual. You're not attacking a position, you're attacking the individual. I hear a lot of talk about qualifications, and it was just brought up by the speaker ahead of me. What are the qualifications of this board? To sit there and make all of the decisions they make governing all of us. I'm here to defend our rights, the rights to vote, and we vote for any commissioner. If they're doing a bad job, we vote them out the next time. The same should hold true, in my estimation, for the auditor, treasurer. Now, there's a new twist tossed in tonight that I hadn't heard before. Option two, to separate the two offices. So if you consider that, maybe some of these arguments go away. But, in my opinion, you're elected to do the job that the will of the people wants you to do. And the majority of the people that have spoke at this platform, podium, has been in favor of keeping that an elected position. I would remind you that should you make the decision to just arbitrarily make it an appointed position, auditor and treasurer, both appointed, that the people of Burley County should remember that when they go to your election. Are you doing the will of the people, the majority? I think not. And then I would urge the people of Burley County, if they feel the same way, to vote you out of the seat you're in now. I think you have to really remember, it's the will of the people. I'm going to cross out some of this mentally. I think I've been on that long enough, that we, the people, and our will is, we do not want one little group of individuals running this county, or the king of Burley County. We want those positions, auditor, treasurer, to be elective the same as you are. Thank you much.
Thanks, Hawk. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. Sign your name at the podium.
Commissioner Bitner, or Chair Bitner, commissioners. My name's Lanny Kenner, Burley County resident. I don't know how many of you think Biden did a good job. Probably not many, but should we give up our voting rights because Biden was bad? I'll never give up my voting rights without a fight, even for Lent. We need checks and balances for the auditor and commissioners. By having finance director and deputy finance director, it seems like we got checks and balances for the auditor, and by us electing the auditor, it's checks and balances for I assume the duties of the county attorney are to give us all facts. I'll leave it at that. I don't care what other counties they're doing. Do we really want to be like Cass County? I don't think so. In Burley County, the voters can remove the auditor if needed. We will not give up our voting rights. End of story. Don't take our voting rights away. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
I also thank you for your service.
Chair Bitner and commissioners, my name is Kelly Sirmak. I'm a 40-plus-year resident of Burley County. I'm also a CPA, CFO for over 40 years. I just want to speak on the issue, you know, auditor serves as the CFO for the county. And the CFO for any corporation is a very integral, important position. And for us as a county, it's just as important, we've got a $40 million budget, we need a competent person in that position. The success of any business depends on a good CFO. It really does. And so I didn't vote for you, Mark, because I did my research, and you weren't qualified, and therefore I didn't vote for you. Commissioner Woodcox, you asked a question, the duties, or there's too many duties for the position. I can assure you, a competent person could do I can assure you, a competent person could do all the duties day one. We talked about the salaries, I think it's one hundred and sixty-eight with a thousand with benefits. I can assure you, you can get a competent person in that position with that salary. Add to that the request for additional staff, the cost of errors, the allocated resources that have already been used, so you're gonna be ahead of the game financially. You know, Mark, you had mentioned your love of the county and I appreciate that. But if you truly love the county, the honorable thing to do right now would be to resign. And appoint someone that's qualified to clean up what's going on in there and get back to business at the county. We gotta get back to business. We wasted a lot of time on this issue. And going forward, if you can assign qualifications to a position, it doesn't make sense if it's elected. If it'd change, I'd change my opinion. But, you know, there was a bill, Heilman brought up a bill at state regarding auditor. I'm not sure what the bill ended up, I'm not sure if you know what it ended up to be. Nevertheless, there was a number of counties that came and drove and testified and told the benefits of it being assigned and they wouldn't change it. And I encourage you, all of you, to look and watch that video. And I encourage you to reach out to all eleven counties, because I think they'll tell you the same thing. That's a real benefit to county. So in closing, again, Mark, do the right thing. Right thing is to resign. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record, sign at the podium, please.
Sorry for anybody who has to follow me to the mic. My name is Marvin Leff. I've been a resident of the county since I moved back here in two thousand and two. To be honest, we shouldn't be here tonight. We, we shouldn't have to. We elect our government leaders to lead us and we shouldn't have to babysit them. With that said, I'm not here to defend Mark, I'm not here to attack the commission. But if anybody's paid any sort of attention to what's going on, on even a statewide level over the last five years, we constantly see auditors being attacked, whether it's our state auditor with Josh Gallion, whether it's Auditor Sponskowski, or even if you look at Dunn County in two thousand and twenty-two, their auditor was elected into position and less than a month later resigned because of course from the commission. So, what we really need is, if we're going to be dragging everybody through this, we had Mark brought up for Hatch Act violations, but where was the same violations brought up for keep it local North Dakota, which received millions of dollars of funding from people that are funded by our state government, that received funding from senators, our DPI, or our state treasurer? If you want to talk about election issues, I ran for Secretary of State in two thousand and twenty-two. I know that our former electorate, our former election director was presented information from District Thirty-five where somebody voted out of district using absentee ballot and chose not to do anything with it, because as a Secretary of State candidate, that information was sent to me as well. Ballot confirmation, as well as the receipt of the person that voted out of district. If you look at our county superintendent, which is currently KRIA, in two thousand and twenty-two, they were helping at Apple Creek School. Why this is pertinent to tonight is Apple Creek in twenty-two had four of their six teachers resign. KRIA was to conduct the investigation as to the hostile work environments that were provided to those teachers and why they resigned. That information was brought to a commissioner and they were told that they were gonna look into it. Within months, KRIA is now our superintendent of the schools. The best thing that I've heard tonight was by Julie Lawyer. The person that writes the checks shouldn't be auditing the books. These need to be separate positions. I am all for hiring a treasurer, hiring a treasurer with a CPA to write out our bills every month. But even a gentleman that just smoked before me knows that every business has an independent audit. You look at Rainbow Energy, you look at United Energy Traders, every year, an out-of-state entity comes to their buildings and audits every one of their books. Our auditor is not only in charge of the money, but he's in charge of our elections. And as far as I'm concerned, even if I don't always agree with what's said, they're the people's last line of defense as to how our tax dollars are spent. So by separating that treasurer position, which I've suggested all along, is the best thing that this board can do. Allow us to elect our auditor, hire a treasurer to run your books. And that, I think is, Commissioner Munson that brought up earlier, transporting the money, using the sheriff's department. Two years ago during legislative session, we brought forward an actual bill to be reviewed on election integrity. And the suggestion that myself and Representative Christianson's had is, why are we not using the sheriff's department to transport our ballots? If the people's money is that valuable, the people's vote should be that valuable. So, at the end of the night, appoint, appoint a treasurer, please. Separate this office, but let us keep our auditor as an elected position. Thank you.
Thank you, Marvin. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward, sign at the podium. Charles, you wanna wait? I know you spoke before and I'm gonna, didn't you speak before?
No.
Okay.
Nope, nope. I waited till the last day.
Okay.
I'm Charles Tuttle. I live off, I live over on Rossar. I've been to a few of these hearings and it's just been a childish, childish game. And the real reason we're all here is because, you know, George Soros set this up years ago to get auditors appointed versus elected. This is about elections. And, you know, a mentor of mine by the name of Rich DeVos used to say, you know, before you look at other people's yards to clean up, look at your own. You folks probably don't even know that you took money from Mark Zuckerberg in two thousand and twenty, science, technology, and life. When I was living in Ward County, I made sure that Ward County gave that money back. You probably don't even know, maybe some of you participated, in the demise of Measure Four, which is completely, the groups that funded that were taxpayer-funded groups. And under sixteen point one dash ten, they need to return all their money. You need to go to the Association of Counties and have them return every penny from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four for opposing an initiative measured by the people. We all need to start thinking about our Constitution. We have a legislature right now that's so out of control, on the gentleman that brought term limits to North Dakota. They are trying to change the Constitution. When it even says right in the Constitution, they cannot refer it. They don't care. They're not, they're not representing their constituents. And if you folks decide, and I think you've already decided, to take this another level, you're not representing your constituents. The constituents of Burley County overwhelmingly want this position elected. It has nothing to do with whether you're, whether you're an accountant or not. When we have elected positions, there's a reason for that. School boards, their parents, they're the ones that are supposed to be in charge, not the superintendents or the experts. The superintendent should be sitting outside of the room when the school boards meet, not inside, directing the school board. We have this problem throughout the whole state. We have a problem with people having no oath of office. I've been working on that problem for over two years now, throughout the state. No oaths of office. Why? Because they don't want to have to follow the law or the Constitution. The Constitution directs whether or not it's elected or not. And the reason it's elected is because it's answerable to the people. You're answer, you're answerable to the people. And we have to stop thinking that we aren't. And we have been acting as of, all throughout the whole country, you could see it, the last four years. We've weaponized government against the people, school board meetings, county commission meetings. We've weaponized to stop people from speaking. We might as well be in Russia or China. This is so important, this is more important than you can imagine. I have seen so many things going through Burley County, you can't even imagine. We hired a person who was on, on the BCI of Montana's list, number one suspect, or number two suspect, in one of the biggest scandals in, in the Attorney General's office. And Burley County hired her. We have got to clean up our own backyard. There's so, the CO2 pipeline, it's coming, guys, if we don't start working about, you're losing local control. This whole legislative session has been about undermining your local control, because everyone that voted Measure Four down, you're gonna lose local control. They're trying to cap what you can do with your budgets. That's local control. That's how our government was set up. The most powerful political subdivision is the township. Most people don't even realize that. What's our legislature doing? They're writing laws to undermine the local control. With this, with this, I guess this electrical grid that they're trying to do and say that the zoning people don't have any right, they're gonna try and give it all to the Public Service Commission? These are the things that we should be dealing with now, not this petty squabble stuff over whether we want a position to be elected or appointed. The people are speaking up. I have not heard too many people say that they don't want this to be elected. You guys know this started in two thousand and thirteen. This is not about Mark. It's not about Mark at all. We've made it about Mark so we can fool the people in thinking that we have such a big problem, we've gotta change this to being appointed. And if you do that, I promise you, I love Home Rule Charters. I love them, because I can go out and get the signatures myself and get this reversed. But that's not the way I want to do it. I don't want to have to have another petition to do. But I'm just telling you, listen to the people. It's the people's decision. It isn't yours. It's not one of Mars, it's the people, all of them together. And I believe it was over sixty-some percent that voted to keep this position elected and somehow it was tricked into a Home Rule Charter election after that, that this was put in. You guys don't want to be the recipients of that kind of, what do they call it, chicanery? Please, listen to the people. Listen to them. They do know what's best. It doesn't always work out, but it does, if you have a bad auditor, you heard Mr. Phelan say, they got voted out. Okay? I've done recalls, I've done all that. We have to start listening to the people. We have to give the government, you know, power is reserved to the people is what our Constitution says. All power is reserved to the people. And we need to remember that, more than anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, sign at the podium, state your name for the record, please. Second call for public hearing.
Chair Bitner and commissioners, my name is Carl Rocco. I've been a resident of Burley County for about thirty-six years. You know, this should be business, not personalities. One of my concerns is, I mean, I believe in that we should elect our officials, but the officials should have the experience, credentials, or whatever in some areas of our government and one is dealing with our, our taxes. I don't know if this is possible. I mean, obviously, if it's an appointed position, then you can look at all the credentials and everything that's there and some of the things that were brought up of the different people that had applied in another area. One of my concerns is on the other side of voting, is everything from personalities come into it, you know, not on experience or talent. And I don't know if this is possible, but when you're dealing with money is, you know, bottom line really for any government organization, that if someone puts their name, I believe that if it was appointed, that a lot more people perhaps would step up, because when you are up for election, well, automatically half the people probably don't like you and everything that goes along with it raising money. But if there were a way, and I don't think people do their due diligence of when you're voting, and that's my concern. And it says when someone comes in, well, we can correct it and vote them out in two years or whatever it is. It's been brought up here, the mistakes have been made and now they were caught and corrected, but that dealt in, you know, whether it was three point seven million or eight million dollars, you know, that should not have been taxed for tax pay. So we paid our taxes ahead of time. You know, at the Capitol, they're talking about reducing our property taxes. Well, if there was, whether it's three point seven or eight million in two years, that shouldn't have been charged, well, maybe we should get that eight million dollars or three point seven million back, besides whatever they come up with. You know, to correct something afterwards or wait two years to bring someone else, that concerns me. So I don't know if it's even possible, but when someone is running for an office like this, where we don't do, a lot of people do their due diligence, what is the experience of these people? So when someone looks, they can say, oh, this person has their credentials or not. Mr. Sponskowski was very articulate in going over the one sheet that was there, but the three point seven to eight million was, was missed somewhere and then found out later in the checks and the balances. I do believe that the one gentleman who was the CPA, that if you have that experience and those credentials, that those things are caught before it has to be corrected two years later. Another thing that concerned me, again, it's just on how we handle our positions. When the meeting was first opened, there was a comment made about, there was a report that we had asked for several times and haven't gotten it yet, or that sixty-six emails of trying to get something done and finally it gets done. I mean, as a professional, that, you know, you want to have that done. And I've been an agent and a registered financial consultant for forty-five years. If I had a client to, there was eight million dollars of money that I hadn't done the correct thing with, there'd be some real issues. So I struggle with it because I think that all positions should be elected, but my concern is that someone in this position, somehow there should be the credentials and activity that are there. You know, if you have a medical condition, you want to have a doctor that's an MD, you know, having some experience, not someone that, you know, yeah, I did it online. So it just, accountability should be there when someone goes into a position, not correcting a mistake that was done afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record, sign at the podium.
I'm a resident of Burley County. I just wanna say thank you to the Commissioners.
What was your name again?
Colin Engelhardt. I just wanna say thanks to the Commissioners and Chairman Bitner and everyone that's taken their time, and myself, right? I'm married, got kids, got stuff to do, and so, yeah, I just appreciate people being here, showing up. And I just wanna just voice, you know, we did vote on this before, whether it was elected or appointed, and I think if that's what we wanna do, we should do that again, put it up for vote. You know, I think Commissioner Bach and you had mentioned that, you know, it's important to hear the voice of the people. I think voting is how you hear the voice of the people. And so, I think if we wanna change this, whether, yeah, whether, you know, it's about Mark or not about Mark, I think that if we wanna change this, it's, I think what gets frustrating for people like me is it's like, you know, we have to show up to these things over and over and over again so that stuff doesn't sneak through. And so I guess, from my standpoint, it's not that I don't trust you guys as Commissioners. I think you guys are doing, you know, from my standpoint, seem like you're doing a good job. But it can be frustrating, I think, for residents and, you know, for the voting body when we vote on stuff one time and it seems like things find a backdoor way of getting in. And so, I guess, if we voted it on one time and wanna bring it up again for it to be appointed or elected, I think we should just do that again. And so I guess that's why my voice, to voice my opinion, I'd be for putting it up, having the position be elected until we vote otherwise. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. This is a public hearing. Second call for public hearing. Third and final call for public hearing. And I am gonna open it up on the last call. Anyone who has spoken before, seeing as how this is the last meeting, you will have an opportunity to come up and speak again if you wish to, so.
I spoke at the first one. We've attended all six and I waited to make sure no one else wanted to speak. Name is Curtis Junt. And I'm gonna start out by saying that I really don't care if this position stays elected. What I do care about is what's transpired and what's brought us to this point. And I feel as Burley County voter, both my wife and I failed miserably in casting our vote for the current auditor. And the reason we've failed is because I didn't do due diligence on, other than knowing what the qualifications were in 1113 to 1114 of the Century Code. I didn't do any due diligence to find out anything other than, here's a guy who's on the city commission. The Splankowski name is well-known in Bismarck. He happens to not even be, he came here twelve years ago. I've been here for sixty-six years, saved my time getting my degree in Fargo. I've spent many hours long before CO2 pipeline in this room. My dad was city engineer. I attended meetings. I know all about city government and how government works. But I, I am really, really disappointed and frustrated at the drama, the chaos that has come and the fact that I feel partly responsible because I voted for this individual knowing zero about him. Well, guess what? I finally know after, you can bloody your knuckles Google him silly, you'll find nothing, zero about where he comes from and what his background is, zero. So, you know, whatever, when did we vote for him? Twenty-two. But I do have information now because I requested it. And I can tell you that on March 7th, he's, one of the things I've learned, I'm gonna back up. One of the things I've learned in dealing with people that are self-dealers and put on a good show and talk a good show and look nice and, one thing I've learned is that when they're, when they're at fault, they will cast their message. They'll go out to the mountaintops and they'll stand there and they will shout to the mountaintops, you know, their story. And it's been in a town hall, it's been on the radio, and I've listened to every single one. On March 7th, well, every time on the radio, it's your fault. On March 7th, I don't report to the county commission, I report to the people. Well, I'm here as the people. And I wanna know how the people are able to hold the treasurer auditor that we've elected accountable. How? We're here, we get to see you guys twice a month. We don't ever, we don't do anything. We don't get to, we don't do appraisal. We're not in meetings. We have no idea, except for what we hear here. So I'm, and this comparing apples to oranges of, oh, we look at your qualifications, this part-time job here, which I think has been full-time for quite a while for you guys, but it's part-time job. This is a full-time job at a hundred and eleven, wait a minute, a hundred and two thousand a year. He gave himself a nine thousand a year raise because he's doing such a good job for us. We're a million dollars in lost revenue and that's just the beginning of, then you hear about W2s and everything else. Mark, I'm sorry, but you came across everybody, including us, as a good guy. You put on a good show. You have good appearance, but I feel deceived and I feel that I breached my fiduciary duty as a voter, but I couldn't find any, anything on you, even to this date, till I finally requested something from Human Resources so I could find out where in the heck did you come from? You had zero qualifications in finance, accounting, economics, business, and even bookkeeping. And I voted for you and so did my wife because I never in a million years would have ever expected somebody to run for a six-figure job, which is an executive job, which I read in Century Code 1113, is the chief financial officer of our county, who would ever run for that job not being able to succeed. You set yourself up for failure. You came in and when I first started taking note, it was summer of twenty-three, and I'm, what the hell is this about? What's this election lawsuit? So I asked, I think it was Commissioner Bitner, did you guys, is this something you guys authorized him to do? No. How about our state's attorney? No. You mean, none of you had any idea that he was gonna do this? Not at all. Right there was the first flag, cause you know what this told me? Now what I know, what I know, you took the job for a paycheck at our expense, an executive level paycheck. You took the job and you took the job to play politics in our office with young Republicans back here who helped fund your lawsuit. And then comes a week before the election this fall, comes out this dirty, dirty, rotten, filthy ad against Chair Bitner. And I despise dirty politics and that's what I see being played by a group that Mark is affiliated with. In that picture that was put out, that's still on the Brighter Future Lines Facebook, are people who did not approve of their picture being on there, and I would highly recommend you take that down soon because from what I'm hearing, you might have some problems coming from that. So right there was something really dirty. Well, then before the election, two weeks, we get the election coordinator quits. And then it was after the election, the deputy auditor quits. And that's, starting in December, when we had the first real controversial meeting here, then an attack dog blowbag shows up from Morton County and creates a whole ruckus. It's embarrassing. The drama and the, everything that's been created is not, it's not a result of the office being elected totally. If the right person who wasn't self-dealing, who had a modicum of ethics, would have run for the job knowing they could succeed at it. But that is not what happened to us. And now we're being blasted all over the radio and every time he's on, I wanna puke on my own shoes because it's all your fault over here, your guys' fault. I saw your backgrounds and your resumes before I voted for every one of you. And I've known four of you for decades. Commissioner Munson, not so much, but, you know, I, we had, this is part-time job, everybody. This is not an entry-level job, not at a hundred and two or a hundred and eleven thousand a year. I hear, oh, well, the staff should be helping train. You know what? If there's an entry-level job for a hundred and eleven thousand a year in anything, I got a feeling we're gonna have a lot of people jumping in on that, on that vote. So I'm, I think we've been deceived. Here on the Darrell Lee Show this last Friday, you know, Darrell's like, yeah, we know, enough of that crying over spilled milk. But I mean, I think, I think we're running out of milk. It's being spilled every week. There's just one thing after another. And I just think that, I don't care if you keep it elected so that everybody here, the kerfuffle about the home rule and, oh, we gotta keep it, don't take our vote. Fine! But we as a citizenry and voters need to do our due diligence and uphold our fiduciary duty as voters to make sure that we are voting for a candidate that's not going to fail and cost us millions of dollars. Cause it's way over a million bucks, folks. Not to mention the drain and the blaming the finance director, blaming Burley County Commission, cause you guys aren't communicating, blaming H.R. I think the emergency manager director got blamed for not posting the budget. I mean, it's everybody else's blame. And Mark, I'm sick of it. And I'm gonna go with this guy here. If you had an ounce of dignity because you deceived us, you deceived your whole family. You came in for the paycheck and to use this office with your buddies over here to play politics. I'm sick of it. It needs to stop and if you, if you could do the right thing to represent what you've tried to represent yourself as to us, you will step down and help stop this nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. Those that have spoken before, this is your opportunity to speak as well.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Dr. Shonert. I was a commissioner here in Burley County for twenty-four years, twenty-four years, excuse me. I started out, I served two terms and then I lost election. And when you lose, it wakes you up. And when I went back and started running again, I listened a lot closer. I thank you guys for having all these meetings and going out to Sterling and Wilton, and I don't know how many meetings you had here. I think I've attended them all but one. But I appreciate what you've done. I think you've done a good job and it shows up here tonight. It's just about a full house. And I, I haven't heard too much support for making this an elected office. It's all been appointed. And I guess I'm totally against that. You have some good points against him, whatever it was that he didn't do right. And yeah, we may have to put up with him for another year or two. But look at it from another note. What if you guys appoint someone and they turn out not to be any better? Just because they're appointed doesn't mean that they're gonna be a better auditor. You could have someone worse. And keep it in mind. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak? And those who have spoken before, this is your opportunity to speak again.
My pen's not working. Can you, somebody write my name?
We know ya.
So I'll take my second turn here. I think we've had enough, you know, pointing fingers, casting stones, you know, critiquing all you guys. We just sat through five minutes of it. We could sit and do this all night long, judging you guys, but I don't think any of you are gonna raise your hand and say you're perfect, say you've made all the right decisions. I think tonight, what we heard, especially early on, this public comment, is that there's a lot of improvement that needs to be done in Burley County besides the county auditor position. You heard from staff, we continually say that we put the weight, you know, we give more weight to our staff. You heard her. She said it's affecting our staff. This whole feud that you guys got going, it's affecting everybody. I'm waiting for somebody to stand up and be the leader. You guys talking about the security tonight. I sat over there and my head about imploded. I think Sheriff Leben can maybe comment. But part of security is you don't disclose all of your process. It doesn't take a genius to figure that out. So you guys are up here asking questions that maybe you're not qualified to be asking. I just couldn't sit there quietly and not mention it because you guys just set this man up to get mugged by asking those questions. Because I honestly didn't know your process until you sat here and you, you fingered through it. So like I said, we all make mistakes. We can move on. Chairman Bitner offered a solution. After you guys exposed that process, maybe we should be expediting that process. But like I said, this whole process of the auditor and this feud that you guys have, it's muddied the waters. It's made Burley County look laughable throughout the state. I've been a lifelong Burley County resident. Up to this point, I think you guys have done a fairly good job. But throughout this process and the turbulence that it's stirred up, there's a lot of questions. And I am gonna touch on the Home Rule Charter, whether you wanna, I mean, cut me off right now, but I, I do feel deceived. You guys have all heard the audio. It was played up here. I believe you've all seen the video where Erica stood up here. Chairman Bitner specifically asked her questions. Our county state's attorney sat quiet. Part of her job is to be your guys' legal advisor. That entails clarification. She is supposed to know more than you guys know. Simple as that. She's, she's supposed to give you guys direction. So when Chairman Bitner at the time poised the question that it would go back to the people, I've re-watched the video numerous times. It was not said that if we pass this resolution or this, if you guys act on it at the time, would the people have to collect signatures for it to go back to the people? It was simply said that it would go to the people. So I, I don't feel, I feel like you guys are casting stones at me. And I'm not gonna sit here and tell you after learning everything we've learned, that he's doing a good job. Maybe he's better suited to be a commissioner than an auditor. I mean, at this point, he would have my vote out of spite for all you guys. Cause you guys, I came tonight specifically to listen to her presentation. I, I wanted some better answers. And to be quite frank with you guys, I'm disappointed by after, after watching her husband's testimony on Saturday, I firmly believe she wrote it for him because it was the same information that we were presented tonight. I don't wanna be like Cass County. I don't wanna be like any of the other counties that were on that list. I'm a proud Burley County resident. For the most part, I'm proud of how we do things. My question, you guys, my final comment is I would support splitting the offices. I think that is a admirable, admirable compromise. When are we gonna see you guys rise as leaders? That's, that's my question. There's a lot of questions that aren't answered. We need leadership right now, guys. If we're gonna turn this ship around regardless of what happens with this auditor position, we need actual leadership. One thing I would recommend to you guys after watching these meetings for as long as I have, is to maybe do something like what Bismarck Public School does and do workshops. Cause that's where those questions, like you guys did with the security tonight, can be asked in more of a private setting. Or it gives your staff an opportunity to better present things, to walk through things with you in a workshop setting. I know y'all have portfolios, y'all got meetings. I get it, it's one more thing that has to be added on. But those workshops, I feel would greatly benefit you guys and it would keep these meetings more business-oriented and streamlined. So like I said, I don't support making it a appointed position. I would support splitting the positions. I think that is a, a good compromise. But guys, regardless of how you walk away from this whole process, we have work to do. And I say "we" because you guys rely on the community just as much as we rely on you. It, it's a "we" thing. We make Burley County what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Anyone else wishing to speak? Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Uh, anyone else wishing to speak?
Sorry, gentlemen, just one, one thing.
Spoke to you.
Okay. Sorry, gentlemen, just one thing. I would wholly support.
Name for the record, just we know ya, but.
My name is Pat Shonert, and I'm a citizen of Burley County for almost seventy-some years. However, I would wholly support splitting the office. We had a, a treasurer in all those years with Helen Schatz, and she ran for that position. And I think it's too much to have one person do both offices. So perhaps that's one thing we could think about, or you could think about with a election. Do you favor splitting the office? Do you favor, you know, voting for auditor? Or do you favor for an appointed? That's something to consider. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Final call for public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. Third and final call for public hearing. With that, this public hearing is now closed. Mary, um, when does the online input get closed?
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth? Okay. Um, so those that have not weighed in or maybe not been able to make one of these meetings, uh, if you go to our website, www.burley.gov, uh, there's a public input form there that will be online until April fifteenth. Uh, so if you'd like to make a comment there, please, uh, feel free to weigh in. Uh, for those that have sat through some of these longer meetings, uh, and attended some of the other ones, thank you very much. Cause this is our opportunity to hear what the public has to say. Um, this is, you know, I thank you for being here. Cause that's like the most important, uh, input that we get as Commissioners. So thank you very much. And with that, I'll yield back to Chair Bittner. And if we could take about a
Yeah.
Three-minute break, uh, just for those that wanna leave can leave and I can use the restroom.
Okay, you go for it.
Okay, how long, how long do you want? Ten minutes?
I, I'm good with three, but.
Okay. We'll take a short break.
Okay, the next item on here is, uh, me. Um, appointment of Robert Hook as Facilities Director. Um, Bob, you wanna come on up, uh, introduce yourself? Be brief, I think.
I'll be very brief.
Just, just joking with you, you know?
I'm, I'm Bob Hook. I spent, uh, thirty-plus years in law enforcement. Finished up as two terms as sheriff. I was a sheriff, retired, got called back to help, ended up being another term as sheriff, and explain on that. Uh, along with that, when I retired the first time, I got into the, uh, facilities management arena and then worked on some large projects here in Bismarck. And, um, this opportunity came about, I looked into it and I applied for. I think I have something to offer the citizens and taxpayers, which I am one of them. And here we are today, I guess.
Great. So you have your county phone and your county email all set up?
Yes.
Okay, I'll have you give me a call tomorrow. Just on the caption, the number.
Do we need to vote on this? We don't, do we?
No, he's, he's on board and he's tired.
Actually, as Phil, Chair, as Facilities Director, if you wouldn't mind texting me as well, so I've got your number.
I can do that.
Or, or send that out.
Or maybe just a group email.
Yeah.
Yeah, group emails fine too, so.
So we all get that.
And where were you, just for the public, uh, where were you a sheriff?
I was a sheriff in Griggs County, Cooperstown.
Cooperstown.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Now, are you a Facility Director of Black, uh, we got a shop in Wing and we got one at Sterling, I think. Is, are you in charge of all the facilities or highway departments still have that or?
You know, we didn't.
Didn't, didn't.
We didn't think about those outlying shops. We didn't, your job just got.
Right now, uh, it'd be the Providence Building, the Courthouse, the Detention Center, uh, Burley East, the old, uh, county shop.
Okay.
And then, uh, could be doing some stuff for the, the Road Department's building. And gotta meet with the director there on that and get a plan going forward. So we're getting into budget season. So that's my, my number one concern, I guess.
Great.
Budgeting and.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Yes.
Welcome aboard. Thanks, Bob. Appreciate it.
You wanna be elected? We could, you know, look on that.
You're in there, done that, twenty-nine.
You've already, you've already gone through it two or three times.
Yeah. All right.
All right. Thanks for coming in, Bob. Appreciate it. And good luck. Um, next is HTG Architecture and Engineering Fees. Dan, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Dan Schaff, HTG Architects. Um, you guys probably have in front of you the actual breakdown of the additional services being requested for architectural and engineering design services for Providence Building renovation, as we had discussed last week. Um, further breakdown being shown on here, if you just kinda jump, I'll give you a kind of an overview of this. Jump to paragraph number two. Sorry, can you guys hear me okay? Um, the original contract for A&E Design Services was five hundred and fifty-eight thousand. That was based on the ten to twelve million dollar original cost estimate for the building renovations. Um, I'll remind you that that ten to twelve million dollars is the building renovation cost. That doesn't include contingencies, overhead profit, things like that. That's just base renovation costs. Um, so that put it in that four point six to five point five percent for design fees. Um, so if you take the overall, it's probably more in that three point four to four point five, um, if you look at the overall fees on that original cost estimate. And the original contract also indicated an eighteen-month design and construction period. So there was a six-month design period and we are assuming twelve months of construction. Now that we've seen the general contractor bids, um, construction is most likely gonna take twenty-four months up to twenty-eight months. Um, so there's some additional fees that we'll talk about in here for additional construction services as well. So jumping down to the bottom, um, some of the scope changes to the original contract are as follows. Um, we got some floor plan renovations or revisions that we're gonna talk about here. Um, rebidding the project for the electrical, mechanical, asbestos, and roof replacement. Um, and then the additional construction administration services as well. Um, so some of the plan changes that we talked about last week are, um, some minor plan changes to the lower level, some minor planner, plan changes to the fifth floor, um, completely redesigning the second floor where human services is now and moving them up to the fourth floor where the chamber, the chamber room is now. And we're gonna take that chamber room and move it down to the second floor where human services is. So two big revisions to it and then some minor ones on a couple of floors as well. Along with that, you could see we kinda broke it down into each individual phase of the project. Um, I don't know if you want me to run through each one of those, but that, that basically is each phase of the project and what's entailed in our additional fees that we're asking for tonight. Um, so actually, I'll run through the high level of those. We're gonna have some design development. So we're gonna have to meet with the county a couple of times to go through the revisions. Um, we'll have to make those revisions. We'll wanna meet with them one more time. Make sure that's, everything is included prior to moving into construction documents. Once that is done, we'll, the rebid portion of the project is gonna keep moving forward. Um, I'll remind you, we only have sixty days to hold those general contractor bids that we have right now. So the advertisement for bid actually went out last week. So it's gonna show up in the paper here. Um, cause we have the twenty-one days that we have to by century code advertise in the paper before we can move ahead, um, and get the bids submitted for those missing pieces. Um, once that is done, um, you guys will award. And then we'll move into construction. Hopefully, we can squeeze up the timeline between twenty-eight and twenty-four months and make it sooner than that. But there's gonna be additional meetings. Go ahead.
Uh, just, did you have an opportunity to talk, uh, with any of the contractors about that phasing side of it? Cause we were looking at if we're able to change some of the phasing.
Yep. And that's gonna, that's gonna reflect some of their bids coming back in here. Yep.
And, and the timeline.
And, and the ti, the timeline's gonna change and some of the bid, the, the dollar amounts are gonna change even from the general contractors because we're reducing it to one phase or one with a little bit of extra phase depending on how, how we can move human services. But that'll be done by change order during construction. So you will be getting money back for that.
Okay.
Since we're not rebidding those portions of the project. So even the changes that we make to the floor plans in those now, that's gonna be done by change order. Cause we can't wait. We had to get it out for rebid for those missing portions. Otherwise, we would lose that, the original general contractor bids. So, to keep the ball moving anyways. Um, so along with the CA, like you said, we're just assuming that additional twelve months of construction. So that's bi-weekly meetings, twenty-four additional meetings, more pay applications we need to review. Everything is broken down. We, we actually figured it to the hour on these. So we're not charging you guys for anything extra that we don't need. And there may be some cost savings at the end too, if we don't go that duration. So if we can shorten it up, we won't have that, those additional fees, we'll credit them back to you too. Um, so looking like, uh, there's a note on here too. So also this, this is an amendment to the original agreement as well. So there's a list of CA services and things in there in that original agreement. This is just additional on top of that. And this goes into the breakdown. We wanted to show you each piece instead of just throwing one big number at you, scaring you guys. Um, so you can see what the design development, the construction documents, the rebidding, um, the additional CA, and then we even broke out the mechanical and electrical because those are two bigger portions of the project. So you can see the total on there. Any questions out of that?
No.
I know, it's kind of a lot right away. So, so even with additional services, it, it brings us up to five point four to six point five percent of the original building estimate, um, which I think we're gonna fall kind of in the middle of that. And we're still really low. When we typically charge these out, we're in that eight to ten percent for renovation. So we're still well below standard. Any questions? Um, also at the end of this thing too, um, the last two sheets. So we had, we included the original project schedule, the estimated project schedule, and then we revised that according to the general contractor bids as well. To, to reflect that twenty-four to twenty-eighth month, twenty-eight months of construction time. So you're looking at a completion around June of twenty-twenty-seven.
Yeah, we gotta be able to pick that up.
I believe we can. Yeah.
That seems to me that there's not that much work to do.
Right. And, and that's kinda the conversations we had with the con, the general contractors as well. Um, there's always that, that fluff that's in there for liquidated damages. So once, once we do get them under contract, we can tighten that up and get a solid schedule for you guys.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Woodcox.
We at one time talked about moving human resources, I mean, the social services out of there entirely and then doing all the project at one time. Is that still the plan or, or did we?
Nope, that's still the plan. We're gonna try to move out as, as much as we can at one time. But when we were here last week, human services, she said, like, her IT needs to stay. There's a few things that need to stay in the building that I think we could work around.
Accommodate.
Minimal. Uh, and, cause the more of the building we can give the contractors at one time, the, the faster it's gonna go and the more money we're gonna save.
Okay.
Great.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Where are we moving humans, or to that human service zone too?
We haven't found that out yet.
That's what we're working through as part of this redesign.
We're going through that right now with, you know, some of it could be basement, some of it's whatever they can get into the annex. We're trying to keep them on site as much as possible. Uh, Chelsea does have some flexibility with people working from home. So my goal is, my portfolio is if we can keep them on site, that'll mitigate costs for rent down the road. So we're working through that process right now.
Okay. Good answer. So we need a motion regarding these fees.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second to approve, uh, as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Chair Bittner.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Before we get off, I'm gonna go ahead.
Uh, did we need to?
Yes, we need to do something else.
Yeah.
Um, we gotta back up, um, to the appointment of Robert Hook as Facilities Director. I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve, uh, Robert Hook as the Facilities Director for Burley County.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Chair Bittner.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Sheriff Lieben, um, before we go off on yours, North Dakota Department of Transportation Traffic Safety Grant in Burley East bid acceptance, um, to, to the folks that were wondering, um, we do have some plans for moving forward as far as the auditor treasurer situation that we have been discussing. But right now, it's kind of a discussion between myself and the state's attorney and, and this committee that we're gonna be doing moving forward. So, um, um, we're definitely taking note of, uh, of all the comments, just so that everybody's aware. It's not been wasted time because we really did wanna hear. Okay?
Um, Chair, just, uh, one follow-up with that. Uh, so the staff report or the committee report, uh, is there a timeline on when that would be available? I know staff's been.
Well, you got part of it tonight without knowing it.
Okay.
You know, so you got, you got part of it. Um, but I don't know what everybody's.
My concern is the public getting it.
Yeah, I, I think that I have to give them some time to be able to get together and whatnot between trials with the state's attorney and, and, uh, even the, um, Finance Department guys, they've been so busy on this year-end stuff.
Right. But that's the recurring theme through all of the public hearings that we've been having is the public wants more information.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that
Right.
We get that out sooner than later.
Yeah. Well, just so that you know, the Finance Department just took, you know, this, this was that original, the original information that was kinda the, uh, resulted in, um, uh, public records requests. And the Finance Department, um, scanned all of that in so that they could, uh, would make it in a PDF. And they also included all this information also. And so all of that information is what's gonna go to the committee for, um, for, for review. It's just, they had a heck of a time just getting this thing copied because they're so busy on everything else with year-end.
My concern is that, you know, people have been asking for, for that because they're, as a public are trying to, as our constituents are trying to base, um, with not the full picture, so.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's a lot of information, so. Okay, Sheriff Lieben, welcome.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The first item is the Department of Transportation, Department of Transportation Traffic Safety Grant Addendum. Basically, this is a routine thing. We do this every year. Uh, it's a two-part grant. First is the overtime hours, uh, that we put in for all the traffic safety programs. As part of that grant, we always apply for equipment. Uh, that usually comes later like it did this time. And so I'm just back with a request for permission to accept the eight thousand dollar grant for the equipment part of the traffic safety grant.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. I have a comment. Now, is that contract one-two-two-four-one-two-four-five-A?
That's correct. You and the auditor should have gotten it electronically.
Yeah, I have it on, I have it on my screen right now.
So after tonight, you can electronically sign it.
Okay. All right. Just confirming that. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Call the roll.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes, but only if you tell us where the speed traps are.
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
Yes.
Chair Bittner.
Yes, motion carries. Go ahead.
People ask how you avoid a speeding ticket.
Don't speed.
Don't speed.
I've got a couple of get out of jail cards that you gave me that I haven't used them yet.
Well, but those expire.
Wait, wait, wait.
How do I get them?
Okay, Commissioners, this next item, um, is a little, gonna be a little bit more interesting. We're gonna walk through this. So, um, I will kinda let you know as we go through this, what the action should be, or at least what I would request the action to be. Um, I do also have, um, Mr. Ubo, Jeff Ubo's here tonight. Um, he can help answer questions. Julie Lawyer, State's Attorney, will be able to weigh in on this. Um, and also, we have met with Commissioner Woodcox as my portfolio holder. So I'm gonna kinda start with a recap and then we'll kinda get into the details. But as you remember, we started this Burley East renovation project quite a while back with ARPA funds. Um, kind of the, the last big significant event was when we had to rededicate those ARPA funds uh, back on December twenty-third of twenty-twenty-four. So after that meeting on twelve-twenty-three, um, the renovation funding was set at seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-one. We had already. at $752,561. We had already signed the contract with Ubel at, Ubel Architect and Design. At that point, their fees were set at $77,600, which left, left us $674,961 for the project. On April 1, 2025, just a little bit ago, we had the bid opening here in the Tom Baker Room, and we had received three bids for general construction with the low bid received from Dakota West Contracting for $340,600. The paper I gave you at the start was something that came in from Ubel Design. We were expecting that. I got it too late to get it in your packet. That's why I put these numbers in, but I wanted you to also have that for your review. We did receive four bids for the mechanical construction part of the project. The low bid received was from Northern Plains Plumbing and Heating for $130,750. One bid was received after bid opening and not opened. I still am in possession of that bid. And basically, that bid was received from Central Mechanical. What had happened was the instructions indicated that the bids should be delivered to the architect prior to bid opening. That bid was dropped off in the auditor's office at 10:00 a.m. that morning. We were unaware of it at bid opening. It wasn't until that afternoon, the auditor's office contacted our office to make us aware of that bid there. And at that point, Major Jim Holm, who's working on this project, had reached out to Jeff Ubel and state, state's attorney lawyer and asked the recommendation on this bid. So as of now, the bid remains sealed, and the, the information received from state's attorney lawyer and Ubel was that ultimately the commission's going to have to make a decision on that bid, but it did not follow the instructions. And we weren't notified the bid had been received. Therefore, it's the opinion, and I don't want to speak for Julie or Jeff, but I think they're in agreement, this bid should be rejected. But I want to, so that's one of the first things we're going to have to discuss is what to do with this bid.
Okay. You know, I've been on a lot of government work. And, and we, we always follow what the instructions say. But I can tell you that almost all of the time, the bids go to the auditor's office in Burley County. And that really doesn't surprise me that somebody dropped off a bid, especially from what I understand, that they explained that they weren't going to be available at the meet, at the meeting or at the bid opening. And, and I think that just the fact that we, the collective we, whether it was the auditor's office, had it in our possession. And I think it's, wasn't it, who opened the bids?
Jeff Ubel did. With, we were all in attendance here.
Right. Okay. I, as a contractor, I wouldn't have seen that as being unusual, to, to drop off a bid, but the notion that it was going to get to the right place. Bid opening was here?
That's correct. Yes.
Yeah. I, you know, in, in my opinion, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have seen a problem with.
Accepting it?
With receiving it and opening it, you know.
I do have a question.
Commissioner Bakken.
Is there an electronic filing for bids?
There is. Absolutely. We do it. That's one of the other things that we should talk about.
Was this open for that?
Because we, we, a lot of the bids that we do is electronic anymore. It's almost, matter of fact, most of them are now. Of course, you run into the thing of whether they're, you know, secure or not.
Were these bids open to an electronic filing?
I don't know that. Could they have filed electronically?
Okay.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, part of the issue was, we didn't get this bid until 3 o'clock in the.
I get it. I get it. But that was, that was a problem within the auditor's office, that if that thing was handed off, that should have been forwarded at appropriate time.
When did, when did you get that?
I, I think the note indicates, we were notified at our department at 3:20 in the afternoon.
Yeah.
That's the first we were aware of it. I see the state's attorney coming. I'll defer.
Yeah.
I'm not going to take over, but.
Uh-oh.
Just for your consideration as well, the statute requires that at the date and ti, or the time and place specified in the notice, the governing body or its designated agent shall open publicly and read aloud each responsible bid received. Obviously, that couldn't happen with the bid that went to the auditor's office because it wasn't appropriately received. The instructions did say to turn those over to the architect, and it also indicated the time and place for the bid opening, which was the Tom Baker Room in the city county building. And so it's acceptable to bring it to the bid opening and present it there so that it can be opened and read publicly. The bid instructions also said that the ultimate responsibility is on the bidder to make sure it goes to the right place. There's nothing that substitutes the auditor's office as a catch-all place to deliver bids, especially when it's specified in the advertisement and in the instructions where it needs to go. So we did discuss that with the auditor's office, indicating they probably shouldn't have accepted it since they weren't the place that it was supposed to go. But since they did, they should have taken care of it, especially since, as you note, on the bid envelopes, it says specifically that, that this is a bid to be opened time 11:00 a.m. at 4:125. And so the response we got was that most people that are advertising for bids and opening bids will check with the auditor's office to make sure that there aren't any errant bids that were delivered there. But again, it's the bidder's responsibility to get it where it needs to go. So the only option is if you are going to accept this bid, since it wasn't received at the time and the place, and it wasn't part of the public opening and reading of the bids, would be to reject all bids and rebid it. The only problem with that now is that we've got bids that were open and read publicly, and we've got this one sealed bid from one person who now knows what everybody else bid. And when we rebid or open it up for rebidding, that's not fair bidding practices. And so that's my, my recommendation is that this bid be rejected because the bidder did not get it where it needed to go. And that's ultimately the bidder's responsibility.
So moved. I, I do have a question, though, concerning standard operating procedure, because people wanted to bandy that around earlier.
Get up.
And if it is, if, if it is standard operating that most bids are received at the auditor's office, then why wouldn't that be all bids or filed electronically? I think that clarifies it. And, you know, I work in, used to work on a lot of engineering and, and construction space, and almost everything's electronic now. And it alleviates exact problems like this. So if that's a procedure we need to look at moving forward, I would second your motion. But I think that's something that needs to get looked at, just to make sure that we don't run into this again.
Part of my motion, and we have nine other people. I didn't hear the motion.
To reject the bid.
Reject the bid, okay.
And part of that is nine other people got it in the right place at the right time. Correct. But I do have concerns that if, whatever company it was that has filed in the past at the auditor's office, or whatever the standard location is, yes, that's on them, but we need to clarify that process a little bit better.
Mr. Chairman.
I think that Commissioner Wood.
What prompted them, the auditor, to bring it over at 3:00?
Mr. Chairman.
Why, how did they figure that out?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and maybe the auditor can weigh in on this. I think what happened is that, like, 3:20, they noticed it in the bid box at the auditor's office and contacted our department about it at that point. And then we came over and took possession of it. I, I think it was just received by one person in the office, and I believe noticed by the auditor. I think, but he would have to weigh in on that.
Well, my point is, we have a bid box, which means a lot of people drop off bids at the auditor's office.
Yeah, I wouldn't have seen that as.
If you got, you got a bid box and you got a bid going on, shouldn't that have been taken care of?
Yeah, I believe so. It's, it's a, I, I think there was a duty at that point.
Absolutely.
You know? I mean.
I'm not faulting that communication. I'm just saying that if, if someone has dropped off numerous bids in the past at one location and suddenly something's changed, we need to clarify that.
And that's why it's important for them to read the bid advertisement and the bid instructions.
It was on the.
I, I understand that.
It was on the envelope, on the envelope.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and maybe if I can add, I think in the future, with you hiring a facilities director position, I think the standardization will come. You know, like I said, right now, here I am, a sheriff, trying to oversee a building project.
There's another duty we're lumping on, the facilities director. It's a lot of ad hoc tonight.
I'm glad you're elected, though. That's.
Yes.
Any further, any further discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Woodcox.
This is the vote to reject the bid.
Reject the bid.
Yes.
Commissioner Monson.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
No.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
No, motion carries. Thank you.
Continuing, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So the, under, basically, after speaking with Jeff Ubel and Julie Lawyer, and we've gone over, we took care of one of the issues. The next issue is the, like I stated, the low bid we received was from Dakota West Contracting under the general construction. What I'm going to request of the board to consider, discuss, and ultimately act on would be to reject the low bid of Dakota West Contracting for the project and to look at the next lowest bid for Roars Construction. And so let me explain, and then we can discuss this. So Dakota West Contracting has worked with our department on the Burley East project. And when I say project, we had all that ARPA money originally to make some repairs up there. We worked with Dakota West Contracting. Ultimately, we, we ran into problems with that company. Basically, what I would describe is we got to about 90% completion, and it was like we couldn't get the project finished. Ultimately, we ended up doing some of the work on our own and then paying Dakota West for that. But there was just problems with the project. The next thing, and in speaking with Jeff Ubel, he also indicated that on a state project, they had problems with Dakota West Contracting, similar to what we had experienced. In their defense, he said that was a big project. And again, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but basically, there was a similar pattern. Lastly, if you remember, we had that big courtroom remodel on the first floor of the courthouse. That was Dakota West Contracting on that project. And some of our people that were involved in that project had expressed some of the same, similar issues. Whereas the project was nearing completion, it just seemed like it never got done. And there was problems. We did speak with the court administrator's office, and they did acknowledge there was some issues. Ultimately, they did get resolved. But there was issues with all of these projects we've identified. This is going to be a, a bigger scale project for us compared to some of the work we've had them do in the past. We're also disrupting our patrol staff, you know, and this would be, if this project gets delayed, we're going to be getting into the winter months, which is going to make it more difficult with the fact that our cars and everything are stored up there. The issue, though, that I want you to consider also is the original low bids. If we looked at every low bid from this project, the three, general, mechanical, and electrical, we would have been under the money set aside going into the construction project. If you reject Dakota West Contracting, Roars is going to be an increase. And so the project cost would go from $649,350 to $749,500, which would require an additional $91,600. Now, we have spoken with Lee Jacobs in finance. He has indicated there is potential money that we can use and to offset that, but it would be an additional cost. And so I just want to make sure you're aware of that. Before you make a decision, and another point to consider is, we do have options in the way the bid was set up, that we could do this. Basically, we looked at two phases, kind of, where if the cost came in too high, we could prioritize and maybe not do both of them. If you're looking at potentially cutting one phase, basically, it's the upstairs and the downstairs. I think for those of you that have seen this project, you've seen the necessity of it. I believe it's necessary to do the entire project. If you were going to choose that, not to award additional money to this project, and we would have to cut out one of the phases, then I would say, let us work with Dakota West Contracting. Because I think the overall remodel is more important than any problems or delays we might have. So I, I hope I explained that. It's kind of a lot of moving parts. If you have questions, please ask.
Commissioner Bakken.
Kelly, as far as, I'm assuming the lower phase would be the one that you moved forward with?
I, you know.
I've been out there.
And I would have to talk with Jeff again. He's indicating.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm speaking because of the, the timeliness that we need for the vehicles.
Yes.
So, and the functionality of that lower space. So what would be the plan for that second phase? Would, would that be next year's budget?
Maybe never.
Would that be just?
Who knows?
Because it needs it. From a functional purpose for public safety and law enforcement, it needs it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Bakken, exactly. And that's where I say, the project is important, the entire project. And I think that's, we would advocate for that first and foremost. Obviously, the, the downstairs is where, where we're going to see some structural changes. But the upstairs is, you know, and I, I hate to say it, it's almost embarrassing, you know, when the building, you know, because just over time, and, and we've been working on it slowly, but we're at a point where we've gotten the opportunity, and I would hate to see us miss it.
Well, it's, I, I equate it a little bit to the Providence Building. It just, it's needed some work for a long time, and it hasn't gotten the routine maintenance and work that it's needed. So pushing it off even further at this point, I would not be in favor of. I'm a little disappointed on the extra dollars, but as long as Lee can find that in the budget, I would be in favor of moving forward with this project as, as phased, both phases.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Woodcox.
I've been out there several times, and I agree with you. We need to get the project done. I'm afraid if we do it without finishing, we will never get back to it.
Right.
And so this should be done, and we're done with that building, and it's in good shape. And we do have some precedence on rejecting low bids because of non-performance of some type. The city and the county both, maybe 15, 20 years ago, rejected some road construction projects. And that, we had no problem with that because they had precedence on other things that have been done around the state where the, the low bidder wasn't necessarily the best bidder. So I would, I would move that we go through the whole thing and pay, is it $740,950? That the total budget?
That's correct.
Okay. I move that we would do that.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, basically what your motion would be then, not to put words in your mouth.
Right.
Except the low bids of, let me walk through this here.
Mechanical and the electrical.
Reject Dakota West and accept the low bid of Roars.
Roars Construction, correct.
Thank you. Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Monson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, Missouri Valley Complex, update by Chair Laco. Oh, you got a whole long list. Just go.
I do. I'm so sorry about that.
You should have rode your little horse.
That little horse is really hungry right now, so I will try to get through this as quickly as I can. Good evening, and thank you, Commissioners, for the record. My name is Kay Laco, Chair of the Burley County Missouri Valley Complex Committee, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. As we look forward to the future of the Missouri Valley Complex, one of the most exciting and strategic aspects of the plan. and strategic aspects of the plan that you will start to hear about tonight is its foundation in public and private partnership. It's an approach that ensures the shared investment, broad support, and long-term success. Tonight, we are bringing forward several important items that represent the next steps realizing the full potential of the Missouri Valley Complex as a countywide asset. These items you will hear about tonight were unanimously supported by the committee and are ready for your consideration. Tonight, the Commission will hear engineering updates from Swenson and Hagen on the rezoning and plat development efforts, as well as the Committee's, the Missouri Valley Complex Committee's recommendation for wetland delineation and mitigation in the area north of Hay Creek Channel. Then the Commission will hear from the Burley County Equestrian and Ag Center Committee regarding the complex Committee's recommendation regarding their project plan development as a Burley County project. Finally, the Commission will hear the Committee's recommendation regarding ag and hay leases at the complex. So first, we are asking the Commission to receive two progress reports from Swenson and Hagen, the update on the rezoning efforts at the complex, as well as the plat development schedule, including how we are working to define future activities and land use. I will now ask Swenson and Hagen to provide that overview and discussion of the wetland delineation. Gentlemen?
Good evening, Chair Commissioners. So if we go back to approximately November of last year, we sat down with the Missouri Valley Complex Committee, and we started to have discussions about what the end goal is. And so the end goal is to further use an underused piece of property. But how do we get to that point? Currently, that particular piece of property is platted, it's annexed, and it sits within the City of Bismarck's jurisdiction. So what that means is today, if you had a user come to you and want to use that parcel of property, they would not only have to get permission from the Committee, Burley County, they would also have to get a site plan through the City of Bismarck. Now, what do you have to offer? So that parcel of property right now has some raw water. It has a sanitary sewer that runs through a portion of the property, but again, it does not have a really great public transportation system. It does not have a great theme to promote what you're trying to get out of the property, which is promotion of the public use and a better perspective of what that parcel can become. So the first thing we did was sit down with the group and ask what they were trying to get out of that, and really, they didn't know in the beginning kind of what it was they were trying to get to. So through November and December, we started to have discussions about the zoning of the property. And so currently, the zoning of the property is a PUD. And so when you work through a PUD, from a city's perspective, there will be things that you put into this document that controls things about the development, setbacks, all those types of things. So the thing that is cumbersome about that particular type of zoning is that it is actually very cumbersome to change. You have to go back and go through this process every single time that something changes with that property or how you want to use it. And so there was a decision that possibly changing that zoning to AP Public would be a better or more appropriate type of zoning. And so we did take the parcels of property that sit north of the Hay Creek Drainway and take a look at those as changing those to AP Public, and that would then allow the zoning to kind of free up and allow the county and the committee to better utilize the property as you get users wanting to come in and put facilities in there. Now, that still means that you're still within the city's jurisdiction, so things that would still apply would be, of course, you know, running a set of plans through the city as well to get that city approval. The next thing that we talked about, and I should say that the zoning tomorrow night will go to City Commission for a call for a public hearing, and then two weeks after that, it'll have its public hearing, and then we can get that zoning changed. One of the other things that we started to work on after that was actually kind of a replating. And so right now, the road networks that are out there today, they don't follow the plat that's in place, and so if you overlay the scenario over that plat, we've actually got right-ofways that go through use areas and things like that. So we started to work on what the vision was, on what that could look like. So if we're going to come in and replat, what are we going to replat it as? We could come in here and leave this as one parcel, and we could put access easements and utility easements on here, and it could all be private. So one of the things that come up with that is, of course, if that's private, then you get to expend dollars to maintain the future network. So we had thrown out that we could publicly dedicate some right-ofway within this plat, actually figure out where the thoughtfulness of where you want your utilities, where you want your road network, and actually dedicate that into a plat with right-ofway. So we went and sat down with the City of Bismarck staff and started to explore those ideas about taking that, and then they could actually put a curb and gutter street, which is what they would prefer to do if they would take over maintenance of the right-ofway. And so we came back after the beginning of the year and had some updates with the committee on where staff with city engineering and city planning were sitting. And so right now, we have not submitted a plat, but we did some concepts and threw those out to the group to just get some conversations going about road networks and just kind of what utilities could look like. And so with that, we would be requesting that we could submit for a plat this month, preliminary plat, and start a formal conversation with the city from a plat review, from a stormwater management review, and all the things that we would typically have to produce to get a plat ran through all the departments. One thing that the meetings have actually kind of highlighted is that there is actually a lot of interest in with the spatialness of what things could come out to land on the land, and the thoughtfulness of actually using the higher portions out of the floodplain, well, moving that current road network around a little bit starts to come into play. So when we started this process, that wasn't something that was really kind of on our radar, and through the process of all the conversations that we've had, it started to become apparent that we probably needed to also get a wetland delineation, because there could most likely be a possibility of wetlands being impacted out there. And not knowing exactly where those wetlands and those boundaries are going to be, that would be something that we would need to convey to the plat, and then also, if there's any type of a impact, there'd be obviously some sort of core permit. And so as far as the item C, we would request the ability to start a plat process with the city in SMO 4 and a stormwater management plan. The deadline for the city is, this particular month is April 25th, and then that starts the whole sequence for plat review in May, and ultimately, planning and zoning at the Fourth Wednesday in May. And then depending on how the next item would go, which would be a request for a delineation to actually delineate the lands out there, we would probably hold the plat one month and wait for the results to come back from that delineation and find out what those impacts are. And then, once we knew where that was at, we could get those pieces onto that plat and then continue the plating sequence. It would be nice to start having that plat review and start getting all of the staff and everybody kind of geared up with starting to look at this and getting through those items. So that's kind of a plat update. I believe in your packet you have a, what a request for a delineation could look like. And so there's a couple items that fall into play with the delineation. We need a proposal to delineate the wetlands and get a boundary, but the next couple items are dependent on how everybody would like to proceed if there are impacts. So for instance, after the delineation, we've kind of laid out that there would be a meeting between the pursuant party to do the delineation with the committee members to sit down and to go over that, to evaluate the quality of the wetland, what type of impact it could be if there's a mitigation that might have to be looked at, or if it's a DUC unlimited type credit, type of a buy. And then there could be some decisions then based on what that impact looks like. If, one, you'd like to go with the impact route, or two, if you'd like to go to avoidance and move everything around and stay out of those areas. So if you stay out of those areas.
Do you have a ballpark estimate of what would have to be delineated, or what, how many acres we're looking at?
So that's a good question, Chair, Commissioner Bakken. What we look at from a delineation standpoint isn't like what we think we need to delineate. What we would want to delineate is all of the property, even the high ground. So there was a figure in your packet that showed a shaded area, everything north of the flow line of Hay Creek, all the way up to the main street there. We would want all of that delineated, because if there would be a core permit, the Corps would need to know that the entire area got cleaned.
Right. And pulling the whole thing out, so how much property, how many acres are you, have you made some projections yet of how impactful that would be? Because again, I'm of the opinion that for what benefits Burley County out here, we don't have enough land. So what would we lose?
Prelimarily, we could be maybe looking somewhere between four and five acres.
Okay. Thank you.
Four and five acre, that's all?
Yep.
Really?
We do try to avoid what we think could be wetlands. You know, you can go and look out there, and there's some very obvious areas. The things that are harder to kind of judge preliminarily, just looking at it, is the stuff that, you know, looks like it has been mowed, but could have hydric soils and things like that. Those type of things could be also an indicator of a wetland area. So that is partially why we're wanting to have that request. And then second is also that we do have something then with a hard line that meets what could happen with a impact in a mitigation effort. So like I said, if there's an avoidance, then the other two pieces of the request go away. So one would be the delineation, two would be actually to work with either a DUC's credit land or a mitigation effort, you know, permit with the Corps in asking for a jurisdictional determination. The third thing would be actually after the project would be constructed, and if the wetlands are mitigated, then there's a monitoring period that is required by the Corps to monitor those mitigated wetlands. But if you avoided them or had a DUC's buyout, then that doesn't come into play. So we've kind of asked for, in that proposal, to say, we'd like a price from you. Also, we'd like to know what these other two items would be, but there would be an additional request with a update to say, we've gotten past step one, here's what they had given for prices for steps two and three, and then when decisions are made about impacts, avoidance, all of that, come back to the board, get those decisions, and then move forward with like a secondary contract.
I have a question for you. Wouldn't this project fall in the wheelhouse of the city? Everything on here. They're the ones that this land belongs to. And actually, I don't know if anybody's even found out that they're going to allow horses in the city. But forget that, but when you look at this, this would all be city zoning. You would need a plat, you would need engineers' estimates. And then I have another question here. It says, "The Committee asks the Commission to approve public development of all roads, water service, sewer, parking lots, and utilities." There's no storm sewer on that. Does that mean you're asking the county to give you a blank check so you can go out and do this?
Chairman, Commissioner Schwab.
We got to pay for it?
So you are correct that the jurisdiction falls within City of Bismarck, and that the property today would not need to be rezoned, but if you are looking at actually having the road network and all those things, right now, that road network and possibly what the road network could be, don't follow the plat today. And so there's two questions, I guess, one being, you know, do you put the roads where the right-ofway in the plat currently is, or do you just replat it and get everything where you want it? To your point about streets, storm, and things like that, the city's policy is typically been from a land development standpoint, and, you know, they would consider you just like that. You are required to install the water and sewer inspected by the city, and then the city would maintain and take over those services. You can petition for special assessments for storm sewer and paving, which the city has preliminarily, as we've had our discussion, said that they would be willing to take petitions and do that.
There's no estimate. I can give you an estimate on this project, about $6 million, if not more.
There is, there is a substantial.
Yeah, I'm really concerned about this. If we approve something that we haven't even got a plat on, who knows? It could be $16 million by the time it's done. It seems like this thing is operating backwards. I can, actually.
And we are only asking for, I mean, we're only doing the plating right now.
I realize that, but it looks to me like the Committee asks Commission to approve public development. What that means is, it's a way of saying, roundabout way of saying that we are going to be paying specials, or we're going to pay for that stuff. Is that correct? I mean, anybody in this room going to pay for it?
Chair, Commissioner Schwab, yeah. In development, they can either be front-loaded and paid by the developer, or they can be petitioned for certain aspects of your infrastructure to be special assessed.
Which is the same thing, it's the same thing as.
Yes.
Same difference, right? Just one has an interest rate attached to it, the other has interest attached to it.
Yeah. And right now, the, you know, the only thing that we are doing at this point is the zoning change. is the zoning change and a request to submit a replat of that area. We are not...
No, 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 no. It says, "The committee asks the commission to do this right here." And what I'm afraid of is, I don't have a problem with this thing. You should have kind of an idea what it's going to cost, I would think, wouldn't you? The migration?
The delineation, I have a rough idea. Yeah. I do have a rough idea.
What roughly you think it's going to cost?
It should be somewhere 15 to 20.
Yeah, see, I don't have a problem with that.
Fifteen or 20, what?
Thousand.
Okay.
Commissioner Woodcock, you had a question?
But this is really the process you're trying to go through to push this project forward, to get the plating done, and that type of thing, right? That's all you're asking for us. Now, you're asking for a commitment to...
No, I am not. I am here to give you an update on the zoning and the plating. And in order to do the plating, I'm requesting whether or not this board would wish us to start that process. And then, secondly, to bring up that at some point, I feel we would need this delineation to fulfill the obligations of the plat.
What is it, delineation? Is that part of the process of planning the whole thing, right?
Plating.
Plating. And you said you have to do that before the Corps may come in and do...
If you have impacts, possible impacts...
Right.
Then that is something that we need to have to show what those impacts could be.
Who's proposing an impact to the wetlands?
I don't think there's any one person that's, that's proposing an impact. We're bringing up a concern that we know there are wetlands in these lower areas. And so, because of that, we'd like to have that delineated so that we know that we're not getting ourselves into trouble with this plating process.
Isn't, isn't that a simple elevation thing?
There's, there's hydric soils, there's wetland plants, there's can be upland wetlands that sit on, perched on sides of hills if we have groundwater in spots that come out. There can be classifications where wetlands can be delineated in those areas.
I haven't, I haven't seen any of that.
I'm guessing the detention center probably had to deal with some of that as well.
No, we didn't have a problem there.
No?
No, I, I think that we've had, you know, a lot of surveying and stuff done over the years. It seems like that would be something we'd already know.
Well, and we looked at that. We tried to find history of any delineation done on the complex, and there hasn't been any. When we looked at the flood map, which I forget, 100 and 500, or there were wetland areas in, you know, even close to where the current outdoor rodeo state is. And so, in order for us to make sure that our plat or our plan is working moving forward, it's important that we have this delineation done so that we know where, if we, if we plant a stake, you know, down there and the Corps says, "No, you can't," well, we'd rather know before we go.
Seems like something we, I thought we already knew that. I just...
And I assume...
We gotta look around for some old records or something.
I assume Swenson and Hagen had done the work, and they can't find any in their records, and we can't find. The Corps has no records.
And I would point out, Chair, that when there is a wetland delineation done, typically those are only valid for a certain length of time, just because the wetlands can grow over time. And so, they don't typically transpire, you know, through the decades.
Snapshot.
Yeah.
So, the benefit to doing that delineation is just to stay out of the wetlands, or is there some monetary thing? Because I was at a planning and zoning meeting, I think I zoomed in on that one, but out east of town here, right, matter of fact, just east of the Fairgrounds property, some guy was, mentioned that it cost him something like $80,000 to work through, I think he was working through the, through or with the Corps of Engineers and DUCs Unlimited to offset the wetlands that he was filling in.
So, my understanding is you can trade one for one. If we have an acre, can we find an acre someplace else to create wetlands? The other option that I've heard is, yes, you can buy a credit from DUCs Unlimited if they have them available, and then you develop on the wetland, even though it's still wetland.
Yeah, well, I guess my, where I was heading with that was, is there some profitability in having these wetlands? You know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna survey them and do whatever, now we, we got them. So, what's it worth us to, you know?
Sell them.
Sell them, yeah. I mean, sell the rates or something. I don't know, it's just a thought, but...
Either way, we would need to have the delineation done so we know where our wetlands are. I mean, we know obviously Hay Creek comes through there. How far does those wetlands affect our property?
Yeah.
So, yeah. And, and that really is, is the important thing, is if we know where they are, then we can start looking at...
Plat accordingly.
Plat accordingly. How can we avoid them? You know, if there's something that's unavoidable, then what is that impact?
Well, I would say that you need to get us a firm cost estimate on that. You know, we're not, we're not in the business of writing blank checks here, right?
No, but I think that's what the committee is asking.
If I may bring that from the committee, that, Chair, Commissioners, that is the request, is from the committee to do a request for proposals so that we know what that's going to cost.
So, that price can come back here for approval.
Right. So, we're at step RFP, and that's what we're asking from the commission. So, we can understand what that cost's going to be.
I don't really think you needed our permission to do a request for proposals, Dave.
Well, the way we set this up, yeah, we did. The way, yeah, the way we set it up, it was very specific that first, Missouri Valley Complex heard it and approved it, and then it comes to us for our approval. So, then, and what they're asking for is just the RFP so that then it can come back to us for approval or denial.
Right. This is our understanding that we're not authorized.
That makes sense. That part makes sense.
Yep.
They can't just do anything you want with it. You have to get our approval.
Right, right. Yep.
Yes, that's correct.
So, I would make the motion that we allow Swenson and Hagen to put together the RFP and, and send out for bids.
Second.
Who's going to pay for this RFP?
Does that include...
For the delineation.
Committee was...
The committee's already, has already approved it and sent it to us for our concurrence.
Right. But why are we...
We have to give them a permission to...
Why, you know, Swenson and Hagen would be doing the work. Why are we asking them to do the RFP?
They're, they wouldn't do the delineation.
Chair, if I could just clarify, no, we would not be doing that work.
Who does that?
We would not be doing any of the delineation. We are actually just asking for the ability to go out for an RFP, to have the people that are qualified in that area to submit proposals back. And then, those proposals would come to your board again for approval.
So, this is, do you have an agreement with the, do you have, do we have a contract with them right now for this?
For Swenson and Hagen, yes, to do the zoning and the plat.
Right. So, is this work covered under that agreement, or is that going to increase the cost of this agreement?
It would increase the cost for the cost of the delineation. That's why we're asking for the, approval for the RFP, so that it can come back here to be, yep, yep.
And you estimated that, what, 15 to 20?
I would ballpark, we're ball parking somewhere in there.
Okay.
And then, the delineation also allows you guys to be able to avoid what can be avoided.
Right. So, then the plat moves forward.
After we get the delineation, find out where, where things are and where they're not.
I think it's good information to, you know, to nail it down.
Long-term, long-term, we're going to need it anyway at some point.
Yeah, I think so. So, I'm not, not opposed to that. I'm just, don't want to go barreling ahead without knowing some of this.
Nope, that's why we're asking for the RFP.
No cost to us at this point. It's just asking for the RFP, or giving them the permission to go out and seek RFPs.
Yep.
Did we have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion in a second.
Okay, any other discussion? Call the rule.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
No.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Monson.
Yes.
Chair Bittner.
No, just to, just because.
Motion carries.
Just because. Yeah, just like that.
I just hope this doesn't get us hooked into paying for pretty soon a horse club building, and that's what, that's how it starts. That's my concern. And we made a promise on that, that that wasn't going to happen.
No, and that's why we're following this process.
Yep. We'll let Kay show you the next part.
Somebody's got to pay for all this stuff.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Woodcock.
I did find out that according to the city regulations, you can't have a cow or horse out there longer than 30 days. So, you could keep it. So, we can't store, you can't have a horse barn or, you know, where you rent out stalls for six months or something.
So, every 30 days, you can't use it, huh?
Yep, that's right. 30 days, and you got to come out and come back. But that's one of their rules.
I think, I think, and we're, we're ahead of ourselves. I want to ask Kay to keep moving on.
Thank you. Commissioner Monson, Chair, Commission Members, next. The Missouri Valley Complex Committee brings forward to you a recommendation for the Equestrian and Ag Complex Committee. At approval, the request is the approval to proceed with project plan development for the Burley County Equestrian and Ag Center located on the site identified in the preliminary plat as a Burley County project. At this time, I would like to invite representatives from the Ag and Equestrian Complex Committee to present an overview and share the vision outlined in your packets already. Again, this is for the project plan development.
I swear about your anniversary there, Commissioner.
She already knew.
Is this your anniversary?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Happy anniversary. Thank you.
35?
Sanctified woman, I take it.
She is saintly, if she could handle it for that long.
We won't make any snide comments.
And I might need some house effects.
Can I give you three?
Nope, just two.
All right. I can share.
Did I get two?
We've got the inside view and the...
Two different, two new ones from what's in the package.
And is it possible to use the overhead?
Yeah, the Elmo, yeah.
Yeah.
Not able to get that started? There's something I can press.
They'll switch it and...
Can I get the Elmo, please?
They'll switch it. There you go.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I first want to thank the, the work that the Missouri Valley Complex Committee is doing for, on behalf of all the stakeholders out there. There are many hours that are being put into this effort, and they're making sure that what we bring forward to this commission is very, very important to each of the different stakeholder groups and that we all work well together. So, I really want to thank the group and thank Kay for helping us with this project here today. We're here today, as promised, to give you an update. We've been before, but as we work through the Missouri Valley Complex Committee, we promised that we wanted to give updates as we move this project along. And I wanted to thank a lot of the support that we're, we're getting from different, different entities. And before you, you see a lot of the presentation of the, the project that we're working with as it's grown. We've had a lot of support from Ubel and from Icon, as well as Eng Tech, and a lot of different entities that have jumped in to get behind this project. With us today, we have the Local Issues Committee from the chamber that's also interested in the progress that we're making. So, we're staying true to our mission, which is to promote the development of a premier public equestrian agriculture and livestock facility for local, state, and national education, recreation, social events, and competitions on the Missouri Valley Complex. So, as we share our story, one of the biggest challenges that I have is to educate people on just how diverse the Equestrian and Ag, Ag Center is going to be. And when we talk about this, we talk about that it is a multi-use, multi-discipline, and multi-generation demographic. And for Burley County, it's an untapped demographic for economic development. And before you, or when we look at this, we look at, every age group is represented here, from the children that are in 4H and that participate in the extension projects, to someone that might be a little bit older at heart, to different disciplines that are, that are available to compete in, to practice, and to learn about in the equestrian world. The reiners are different than the cutters. The cutters are different than the mounted shooters. The mounted shooters are different than the dressage people. The dressage people are different than the, the eventing people, as well as the different kinds of showmanship and pleasure and trail riding. If you're getting what I'm laying down here, is that there's different groups of people that would be benefiting from this facility. And we're talking about not just local, but national, state, I mean, it goes into Canada as well, coming down. So, there's lots of opportunity for Burley County to take advantage and provide service to these different entities. The pictures that we have displayed are really about the concept and the vision and where we're going. And what we're looking at today is, is that the area in the plat that is identified as the Equestrian Center, this is what we want to continue planning towards. And I'll go ahead and put this on the overhead as well. But what we see here is the Equestrian Center, it's parking, there's a, there's a track for the Indian Relay Teams, as well as the outdoor arena, that's the square in the area. And that is where we will be moving the outdoor track up to the high ground next to the rest of the facilities. The, the L building is a kind of a combination of a lot of wonderful things, and that is the large event arena, a warm-up arena, a mezzanine with room for office spaces and educational areas, and then up to a 600-stall barn. And what a wonderful event that will be to be able to bring in children with their different livestock that they're showing, or the different events that they're going to be able to show here. The key to this, of course, in the economic area, is, is the stalls for this, this 12-month facility. It's a paradigm shift. So, that's one picture. And I, I would stand for questions for some of this, if there's anybody that's, that has any on the commission. I have another picture that you're seeing too, it's actually the roof that's lifted off. Gives you an idea of what it looks like inside. We stay focused on the livestock with the dirt floor, but there's, there's lots of opportunities for lots of different multi-use, multi-discipline, and multi-generational use of this facility. Okay? And I'll kind of go back into how many different types of partners are we looking at? And this goes back to the multi-discipline. And we've seen this list of just how many diverse groups that will be interested in booking events on, at this facility.
Commissioner Bakken.
Reaching out to these various organizations, I noticed a lot of them are North Dakota organizations. But can you speak a little bit to the attraction, what we could be bringing into Burley County from around the region, or maybe around the country?
Sure. Well, each one of these organizations, they might be the, the state chapter, but the state chapter can also compete nationally. So, a lot of these organizations actually leave the state to compete. And so, we see them taking their, their horse trailers out of town to go to compete. So, we're looking at, when we talked about the economic numbers, we talked about, you know, 26 weekends in a year that we would sustain with. Well, we know that they are choosing that because of the 12, or the three-month season that they have now. When we change the paradigm and we allow them to compete year-round, we look at being able to fill that stall barn with at least, you know, 300 to 600 participants, and economic development numbers tell us... to six hundred participants, and economic development numbers tell us with, based off AQHA, that at least one horse brings at least three people to town.
Okay, and then my other question is, with these organizations you've had contact with, I know we're way early, but as far as commitment and their interest in being able to do events locally rather than having to leave the community?
It's been well-received. Well-received in the horse world. Everybody's asking, how can we help? How can we get involved? We're interested. And it's not just in the room, it's the follow-ups that I'm getting. It's the, when will you bring it? The conversations that come back, and it's about time we're doing something with that land out there. What a positive thing. This is such a great move forward. We're looking at, from, from an economic development, the ancillary projects that come off, I think that was quoted, that a chiropractor understood that there, not only could there be chiropractic work on the horse athletes, but also on the people athletes. And, and just ideas get generated, just what this will set on fire. It'll be a real positive movement for Burley County to be able to focus on something so uplifting and positive for our community.
And, you know, the other side of this too, and I know you're working a lot on the horse base, but as far as other user groups, you know, because bringing a fair back to Bismarck and the other facilities that this, the other amenities that this facility could bring into the community, have you had any of those conversations as far as other, other opportunities?
Well, in our work to make sure that we are partnering with the stakeholders, you mentioned the fairgrounds and the ability to host a fair, also the camping grounds, the seventy-five to a hundred hookups that we're planning for. All of that helps to feed those initiatives about bringing those in. You mentioned that we talked about the horses, but there was a National Sheep Association that's been in touch with us, asking us if they could host their twenty-six national, their twenty-twenty-six national event here because they're looking for a venue. And that was brought to us from the Chamber Visitors Bureau. So that, those are those areas, and then also working on United Tribes Technical College and their desire to grow the, the powwow, the expansion of getting on the circuit for the Indian Relay races. But then also what we can do for the 4H kids and the growth for extension, and the support we can provide Buck Stop Junction for, as part of this, for this, this initiative as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, did you say you made this presentation to the chamber?
To the chamber's local issue committee.
You did, right, okay. And what was their reaction?
Well, they are here.
Hey, chamber, what's your reaction?
Can you step up to the?
Yeah.
They love you on TV, I know that.
It's not public comment, but Brendan Nagel for the record, President of the Bismarck Mandan Chamber, EDC. While we haven't taken an official statement on this particular project, there is definitely interest in the project because of the opportunity to bring extra people into the community. As mentioned, one horse brings three people. You know, if you look at all of the families that travel for, for soccer and basketball and volleyball, those things happen with horses and with animals. And those people come to town and they stay in a hotel, they eat in our restaurants, they take the opportunity to fill gas, they go shopping, they do all kinds of things, and that only increases and boosts our sales tax projections. It's something that we certainly would love to have, and it gives us a leg up on an opportunity to do something that some of the other communities do not have. We would be grateful for this.
Have you done a feasibility study?
I, I've not personally, at the chamber.
You know of any?
Pardon me, I, I think that would be up to the committee.
Yeah, we did one.
This was a while ago where we did conduct feasibility study, and it was vetted by the third party under the commission's guidance to approve the feasibility study of the project.
We presented that here at the, at the commission long before we went to the next step with design.
I didn't have a lot of confidence in that.
And wasn't that the pre-fert, the company that supplies the things, that it's a good idea to do it, is that?
Icon, actually.
Yeah, Icon Architect.
Icon Architect Group was funded by the commission for that feasibility study, third-party review, plus the economic knowledge for the, the surveys that were conducted as well. There was a lot of work put into that by some very skilled people. I, I know that another project had gotten derailed from not having a feasibility study, and back in 2017, the commission had said that we wanted another group to come forward with a feasibility study. So that's when this group had stepped up to fill in that last commission's respect, or request, to be able to fulfill that and move it forward. And that is what we have done.
How much money have you raised for this project?
We've had countless volunteer hours that have gone into this project, and we're going through the proper steps, through the planning phases, to be able to continue to push it forward in the direction, this, this request is to continue to develop the project plan, which does include the fundraising model.
So that's, that's zero? Is that, the answer to the question was, how much money have you raised?
Well, I guess you, we could go to each of the volunteers and to their employers that have volunteered and ask for their payroll on the hours that they've invested into this project, if you would like.
Mr. Chair, if I can, I think part of the, the concern, and I know that the committee has talked to hundreds would be the easiest way to say it, folks that are willing to donate or be part of this process. We're trying to do this in the right steps to make sure we're not getting ahead of ourselves either. That's why we did the feasible study first. That's why we're, we're doing the plans next. We're asking for Burley County's backing to say, here's, here's the land, we're going to let you guys use. It stays county property. We're giving you our blessing. In fact, that's, the motion that's in here is to allow them to actually receive our blessing, that we're going to back this project, not financially, we're going to back this project, this is their project, now they can go out and actually get commitments on the, on the, the money. Wasn't, and I apologize.
I'm not, I'm not prepared to back something that's kind of the pie in the sky, you know? We don't have, I mean, you don't have anybody that's said, if you raise a hundred bucks, I'll match a hundred bucks. You haven't, you don't have. So it, it looks to me like basically we're just going to keep spending money and, you know.
If, if I may please represent the, the.
Missouri Valley Complex Committee.
Yes, thank you for that. I'm tired. Chairman Bitner, members of the commission, the Missouri Valley Complex Committee, that this commission has tasked with hearing projects like this to follow the chain of command, brings forward to you our recommendation that the county approve for this project to continue to go forward and plan. That is, all they're asking for is the blessing to continue to go forward and plan to answer your questions about the funding. They're not asking for money.
That's usually one of the first questions. You know, what's it going to cost?
They have to have the plan in order to understand what it's going to cost.
Right, yeah. There it is. Chair.
Well, I think, who, who provided those pictures right there? That's an architect.
Oh, yes.
There's got to be, there's, there's got to be an opinion of probable cost attached to that already.
There's a lot of factors that we're working with. And again, these were some content, or these are some concept, concept pictures that were there. And so that's where we're at in the, in the planning phase, is, is coming back to you, doing the design, the planning, the rest of the steps that need to take care of, and then, and that's also the fundraising initiative.
Okay, so you're, at this point, having these pictures without any opinion of probable cost?
Yes, because we've been able to do this with volunteer work at this, because of the commitment from the community that's in, invested in this.
So who paid for, who paid for this?
That was all volunteer.
This was all volunteer.
All volunteer, okay.
I made the statement back when.
Get to the mic.
The new. That I would never, and I have never, would okay, going ahead with a project without dimensions on a building, square footage. I don't see it. And I do see, you want to do it as a Burley County project. And once again, once it's a Burley County project, we're responsible. I, this is not the way to do it. I mean, if you're, at least you can give us the square feet, the height of the building and stuff. And I look at these pictures, I'm kind of an old farmer rodeo guy. That ain't the way it's going to look when it's done. I can tell you that. It ain't going to work. And the, I don't know, you know, we started out with getting a building up, and now we're building racetracks. There is no way you guys are going to get this done for under forty, fifty thousand dollars. I can tell you that right now.
Take that bid.
I would take it for forty thousand.
Right.
Yeah, well, well, with, with regard to that, go ahead, Commissioner Bach.
Again, these are conceptual drawings, and this is one project out on the property that the county owns. When they're talking about, and correct me if I'm wrong, when you're talking about, because we set up the process so that everything comes through here, every penny comes through here, even if it's not our pennies. So everything here, this is one project for the development of that entire property for the benefit of all user groups for Burley County. They have to go out and fundraise.
Yep.
We're not spending money on this. They have to go out and fundraise. We're backing in name so that they can go to the state for grant funding, or federal dollars for grant funding, or different user groups for grant funding. That's where, that's where we're putting our, our name out there.
Correct.
And it's name only.
Name only.
Legitimately.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know that I can agree with that, Commissioner, because you're talking about water and sewer and roads and storm sewer and whatnot already. And that alone is going to eat up that five million or whatever's in that account. That money's gone. If we do anything, if we start, the available funding is gone.
Well, then what's the, then what's the property worth, and why did we own it in the first place?
Well, that's a legitimate question.
It, it is a legitimate question. If we're not going to develop that for financial benefit for the county and for the residents of Burley County as an economic development piece, why do we own it?
Well, my point is only that the money that we have available at this point, which seems to be what they want to spend on this, which is understandable, it's gone. It'll be gone with, by the time you get water and sewer, storm sewer and those roads, curb and gutter, you're done. Commissioner Schwab.
I believe I got to correct myself, forty, fifty million dollars? Did I say thousands?
You said thousands.
That's why we took you on your bid.
I'll tell you what, I honestly, you know, in my experience, you better double the five million, get your storm sewers, your water and stuff in, and you haven't even started the building. And.
But the county is not responsible for the building.
That's what they say, but you know.
That's the fundraising. They, they have to have this. They, you, you can't go to a donor, potential donor, and say, okay, here it is, lend me, give me a couple million dollars. You can't do that. You have to have a conceptual design. You have to show them something, because they are not going to donate to a, just a, a concept on a table, and that's it.
What?
Or the state.
It looks like they're, they're at that point.
Pardon me?
They're at that point.
No, they're not. This is not complete enough. This is strictly concept.
Yeah, just conceptual.
We haven't even got a plat through yet.
Mandan-Morton County didn't pay for what the Polk Arena is today. That was fundraised and built. Well, and, and Commissioner Bach is correct, that this group needs our support in name only, so that, that they know, the donors know, that if they're going to give a million, two million, ten million dollars towards this project.
Land's not going.
The land's not going anywhere. We agree with the project. We're going to allow them to build this building on our property. And that's really what it comes down to. They need our support in name, so that they can go out and do that fundraising.
So what happens if they get two-thirds done and they run out of money? The donations don't come in.
It'll be, that's why it's fee again.
That's why they're doing it in phases. There's certain parts of the building will be fundraised for. And the other reason it's a Burley County project is, this gets bid through us, since it's a project going on our property. At the end of the day, we would own it if things went south.
Not like the 4H building.
Right.
I've heard that before.
But, but the thing of it is, is they're going to do this in phases, and they're going to raise money for Phase One and build Phase One. They're going to raise money for Phase Two, build Phase Two. That's been their concept the whole time. They're, they're, but it, it's money that will have to run through us, because it'll be bid by us, managed by us in the construction side of it, but they will be the one raising all the money. For the building.
How much have they raised so far?
Pardon me?
What's the question? Same question you had, Chair. How much money they raised so far?
Nothing until you get this far in the platting.
They haven't tried yet.
Would it, would it be fair, excuse me, Chair Bitner, Commissioners, would it be fair for the Missouri Valley Complex Committee to go back to the Ag and Equestrian Complex, or Ag and Equestrian Committee, and request an in-kind report to demonstrate the investment that they, this group has already made into the designs and the work that otherwise would have been paid for, and that would have been money raised?
That, that, I don't think that's very helpful.
I don't think that's necessary at all.
But, and that's kind of the point I'm getting to, is.
I don't, I don't.
There's been the investment. The Missouri Valley Complex Committee continues to bring forward the recommendation that was voted on at our meeting to request the approval to proceed with the project plan development for this center located on the site identified in the preliminary plat as a Burley County project in name only.
I would make that motion.
I would like to see the first phase, instead of all this other stuff, so we're talking about, because this will change.
Second.
Guarantee it always does.
So we can discuss it. Second.
Motion is second, and further discussion.
And I wholeheartedly agree with you, Commissioner Schwab. We need to, and again, why I made the motion, we need to get this moving so that they can start fundraising and they can come back to us again. Here's Phase One, here's the money for Phase One, let's get, put it out for bid. But if, if we don't back it, if we don't, if we don't support it, they're not going to raise a dollar. Because it's not, they, they need our support to move forward. And I, I'm giving them my support.
I need specifications.
Okay.
Height. I can't support pictures. It doesn't work.
Okay. And that's going to come back to us.
No, I need it right away.
We'll get that bid information.
Hey Jeff, how tall's your building?
That's the second time you've said that to me, Commissioner.
What, that we will get the information?
Yeah.
We will. That's what we're doing. That's what we're trying to do right now.
Yeah, we just got a check back from a company that billed us for a thing out there at the fairgrounds, right? That, I think it was related to this, actually related to this, it was related to this project.
Not this project.
Well, one just like it.
The last project, yes.
Yeah, one just like it.
Yeah, and Ubel was involved in that one, too.
Right. And then I think the check we got back was sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. But the point was, Chair, that you just said, you'll get your report, and we never did get the report. So it wasn't your fault, it was.
Well, we can't put our heads in the sand because we had a bad one by the project, I don't think. Did we have a motion and a?
Second, yes.
We're here, Charles.
Yes, what's the motion then? Motion is to request on behalf of the Equestrian and Ag Committee approval to proceed with the project plan development of the proposed Burley County Equestrian and Ag Center on the site identified in the preliminary plat as a Burley County project.
Okay, any other, any other discussion? Call the rule.
Commissioner Schwab.
No.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bach.
Yes.
Chair Bitner.
No. Motion carries.
That was fine. Can I go on to number four now?
If you dare.
I dare. We're in this far, let's go. This is an easy one, I hope. Finally, the committee brings before the recommendation regarding the ag and hay leases at the complex. The committee recommends not leasing the ag land in 2025 due to anticipated site access needs for project work and wetland survey. Instead, it is the committee's recommendation that in lieu of a lease, the ag land is then overseeded to a grass-covered crop that may provide for contract for hay in the fall of 2025. Additionally, the committee does support leasing the hay land at the complex in 2025, and that does not, that use does not interfere with development plans. So basically, sorry, do you want me, I was going to just summarize it.
With that being said, I would move that we ask Auditor Sponskowski to advertise the hay land for lease for 2025. Let's get that easy one out of the way.
Yep, second. Yep, second.
There is a problem with this.
I thought there was somebody leasing it already.
It, it's only an annual lease and so Auditor Sponskowski was good enough to remind me that I failed to do my job a month ago and have this on the agenda. And so, it's in front of us.
Well, there's that.
Well...
There won't be any hay if it doesn't rain.
Well...
That you gotta remember too.
Agree.
Hey, we can delineate wetlands and irrigate, right?
Right. But, but we, we, we've always put it out for bid.
Right.
So, let's get it put out for bid. For the hay land.
It was a motion.
Motion. End of second, yep.
Okay, any further discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bach?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Chair Bittner?
Yes, motion carries.
So, the second part of that is the area that we're, we're, we were asking to be developed as an ag and equestrian center. The conversation at the Missouri Valley Complex Committee meeting was asking this commission to plant it to grass for hay in the fall so that we didn't lease it out to ag and then, as we start developing up here, mess up ag land. We're, you know, April. I don't know if we leased it out as ag land, if it would inef- would affect us by fall. I don't know that. Um, I don't think we would be...
There isn't anything going on up there.
But, again, because of my failure, not having it in on a month ago, I'm not sure how many people are gonna bid on it for ag land. Because th- this is all on me. I should have had this in front of you guys a month ago.
Do the best you can.
So, yeah, do we plant it bef- or do we plant it as a cover crop, grass, and let it get hayed this fall? Or do we put it out for bids for ag land for the year to see if we get a taker?
If I may, for what it's worth, Chair Bittner, Commission members, the, one of the representatives on the Missouri Valley Complex Committee is an NDSU Extension Agent and this was among his recommendations.
Yeah, he recommended to put it to grass.
If it stays dry, that hay might be worth more than a crop.
Right. If, if the grass grows.
We'll delineate.
And we'll delineate. We'll pump some water up.
We'll irrigate it.
We'll irrigate it.
You know, I, I don't think the county makes a whole lot of money off it either way.
No.
It's just, it's just, you know, I don't, I don't have a real preference on it.
The, my only thought is...
Do the best you can.
Yeah. My only thought is it would cost us a little bit of money to put it to grass.
Yeah, would.
I don't know that number. I'd have to get a bid and bring that back.
Is that's conversation with the Extension Office of any?
Well, the, the, Commissioner Bach and Chair Bittner, Commission members, the discussion at the meeting that day was that because of the cost, potential cost to the county, it would be better served to the county to put it out on lease so that someone else would possibly incur that cost and it would not sit on the shoulders.
The suggestion was, put it out for a, a cropland, but in the lease, require them to put a cover crop in at the end of the year.
Good luck.
Well, the fairground fund's gonna pay for all this, right?
Well, as long as our weed officer isn't gonna have an extra headache with it, I'm good with that.
Well, and that's why we wanted a cover crop.
Anytime you seed, yeah, anytime you seed, you got weed control.
Yep. And that's why, that's why the Extension Office suggested to put it into grass, so we don't have weeds.
It's a horse piece.
Right. If, if there's no preference, I'll make the motion that we, uh, put it out for ag bid.
Yeah, see if we get a taker.
See if we get a taker. And if we don't, next month, we can move it to grass.
And I would put on that motion that there's a cover crop. So, if it reduces the cost of the bid, we'll still get the cover crop put in.
Okay, I will move that we advertise the ag land for lea- or lease, for a one-year lease. The, uh, contract to be amended that at the end of the season that they have to put the cover crop in.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? One of the things with that cover crop, I guess there's no real need to, but we, we've seeded a lot of native grass.
Yep.
And the funny thing about native grass is it's usually dormant seeded in the fall because it has to go through a freeze thaw cycle in order to germinate and whatnot. So, that, we've done a lot of dormant seeding of native grass seeds and whatnot.
And I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, you, you know some nuances state contracts. I think there's actually some dollars available for going back to native grasslands that could be tapped into.
I'll check with Extension and...
Yeah. The Extension should have all that, but I, there's some different programs out there for that.
Might be. Call the roll.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bach?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Oh, Lord. Nick Ralph.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
No.
Chair Bittner?
Just for you?
Yes. Motion carries.
Chair Commissioners, I'm going to save you my fourth page and against my better judgment, I will offer to stand for any questions.
It's getting late, you know.
Jay, I appreciate you go doing this. I really do.
Did you find a home for Butter?
Butter, yes, Butter, Butter went to her home.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kay.
I'm not sure, I wanna know who Butter is.
County Engineer Hall. Petition to vacate section line.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Um, Chair?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, almost.
Thank you. Uh, one question. Is there any, so, looking at these potential plans for development, um, any concerns in the access point to Highway 10 off of this property or that site, that access point by Buck Stop? Is that going to change, move? Is there, have you heard anything?
At this point, what I saw, um, I thought everything still would meet the criteria that the city and the state and, and the highway department, the county have talked about. So, I don't see anything unusual or out of line yet at this point.
Okay, tha- thank you.
Yep.
You know, I think on that planned unit development, there was an entrance that was planned.
Well, there's automatically one that's there right now and I believe that's the intent, is to keep that one where it's at.
The Buck Stop one, right?
Yep.
Yeah, but I thought there was ano- I thought there was another one...
I, I don't believe the city or any of us in the highway department, highway departments would want another access on the Highway 10. Uh, we may have accesses up on that, uh, what is that?
With the Midwest Motor Express.
Midwest Motors, right, yeah. There may be some additional accesses up there, but nothing on the expressway or on a Highway 10. So, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, under the North Dakota Century Code, the county board of commissioners may close a section line if, um, if they receive a petition and that petition meets certain criterias. Uh, we have received a petition, it's included in your packet, uh, to vacate a portion of a section line. Uh, as part of the process, uh, the county must have a public hea- hearing to determine if there's public benefit evolved with closing this particular section line. So, at this point, all I'm asking for is that you, uh, there's a motion or there's a resolution in your packet to accept the petition and to set the public hearing date for May 5th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the petition and call for a public hearing. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Bach?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Chair Bittner?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a suggestion that one of our department heads sits here till 10 o'clock when they could be moved up to 5:30 or 5:15 and get this out of the way. It's, it's a problem. I mean, we got another one coming up now with planning and zoning. They're sitting here spending their volunteer time until 10 o'clock.
It's not your anniversary, is it, Marcus?
I think it's ridiculous. Did they say thank you?
On the flip, on the flip side, Commissioner Woodcox says, we don't want our public hearing, we don't want residents here till 10 o'clock either.
But this took what, two minutes?
Come on up, Mitch.
Mitch is way awake, come on.
Mitch is awake? He's ready?
He's awake.
Last one for the night. Good evening, Commissioners. First on your packet is the authorization of a service agreement with Sterling Township. Um, Sterling, they've requested our services for issuing perma- permits and conducting the necessary inspections for a project known as Love's Gas Station and Travel Center. It's on Highway 14 and I-94. Um, this is a, uh, basically a standard service agreement we've had, we have with other townships like Apple Creek, uh, Peanut Woods, uh, City of Lincoln, City of Wilton. I mean, we've had these in the past. So, the big thing is that it's, it covers every, everything that we're supposed to do. It covers the insurance requirements and it also, the agreement can be terminated by either party in at least a 30-day written notice.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bach?
Yes.
Chair Bittner?
Yes, motion carries.
Next on the agenda is Summit Point Second Subdivision. Uh, this is a, uh, two, a single lot. They, they combined two lots. This is up at Summit Point First Subdivision. Um, they, the owners met with, uh, with our staff to discuss that need to combine those two lots. This plat was received under Article 31, Section 12 Short Plat Process. Uh, it is an area zone for PUD, single family. A public hearing was held on, uh, March the 12th. The plat contained two revisions. It was recommended for approval by unanimous vote at the Planning Commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bach?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Chair Bittner?
Yes, motion carries.
Next up is the Article 8, Section 29 Solar Energy Systems. Uh, this is, uh, basic solar energy ordinance that, um, has three classifications of residential for one to 20 kilowatts, small commercial, 20 to 50 kilowatts, and large commercial, 50 kilowatts and higher. The solar types are rooftop, ground mount, uh, community solar energy systems, and solar farms. Um, similar to the one that was issued, uh, I think it's not Dickey County. It's over, um, it's Flicker Tail Project that the state, um, was part of and involved in their analysis of it. It was a, about a 3,400-acre parcel. Um, and I think it was a hundred and, close to 100 megawatts for that, for the, for the service that it was gonna produce. Um, this went through two public hearings, um, on, uh, the November the 13th and March the 12th. It went through many revisions. Uh, it also went through two, uh, two stakeholder groups. We had multiple, uh, meetings on this.
Commissioner Bach?
Um, so, I've got a problem with the solar farm portion of this. Food for fuel is never a, a good idea and taking valuable production land out of production for the sake of a solar farm, that, that portion of this I can never be in favor of. So, um, I would be, and I'm a big fan of solar when it's on a small commercial or a residential perspective, but taking production agriculture out for the sake of tax credits, I, I do not see as a good idea. So, I cannot support this. I cannot support this in its entirety, so...
Commissioner Schwab?
Uh, the biggest solar farm is gonna be dismantled now because it doesn't do its job and it's old and it's this and it's that. And I believe it's out in the Nevada desert and it's a lot of acres, way over this. My theory on it is, why are you putting, like he said, land, using land for solar energy when six months out of the year, the sun isn't gonna shine? Winter for sure and half of the other time. It makes no sense, I can't support it.
If this came back without the farm, solar farm aspect, I could be supportive of it. And like I said, I am a big supporter of solar on smaller scales, uh, where it makes sense, but I, I can't support ever taking ag land out of production for the sake of tax credits.
Do them, do them solar panels reflect into airplanes, by the way? I often wondered about that.
I haven't heard that.
No, they make them, they're, they're opaque, aren't they?
They do, they do create a glare. Uh, Mr. Commissioners, Mr. Chair, the idea is that it's better to have an ordinance in place and possibly deny their application than not to have anything on, on our books. Because if they, somebody comes to our, our jurisdiction and asks to put a solar farm in and you're gonna tell them no, that could create a lawsuit for property owner rights for their own development. Um, and it's also, you don't have an ordinance in place, so you'd be walking backwards on that. The other thing is you place a moratorium on it. Um, but it's, I believe it's better to have an ordinance in place than, and to reject an application for certain reasons than not to have one on our, on our books. If that makes sense.
It's always something.
Well, I, I missed that meeting when that was discussed, so I don't have that background. Go ahead, Commissioner Bach.
Caught it, um...
Did they approve it or did not?
I would approve this on the condition that we do have a discussion at a future meeting on putting a moratorium on solar farms in Burley County.
You could do that now, Commissioner, I mean, uh...
I, I...
Or if you wanted to look at that ordinance and strike out certain parts, that's not unusual. The commission can make changes and whatnot, it's all up to this board.
Protecting ag land, Mitch, do you need the solar farm section in there from a, an ordinance perspective? And should, if we were to discuss a, a moratorium on solar farms, then would that be separate from what you need here to be able to do your job?
No, it, it wouldn't be separate. We don't have any on our, applications on our books for these, these items, but there, there is a, um, a growing, um, production of the agric- agricultural takes where they're farming underneath these, um, with different products, different farm products.
Well, one of the big, okay, we're the weed board right now because there was issues with the weed boards. One of the biggest issues that they have with, is weed control with these. To the point where people are having to rent goats. I'm not joking. That's, that's not even joking.
And there's a provision in there to follow Century Code for noxious weed requirements. You know, these, these applications will come to you to the board. If, if we, if somebody comes in and wants to have a, a solar farm or go to the Planning Commission, if it's, if it goes past them and it comes to you, you're, for your final approval. If you think it's gonna take valuable farmland out of, uh, agri- and out of production, then that could be your reason of denial.
Okay. So, when I read through this as written, this gives you what you need to have a legal leg to stand on so that if we were to deny something, we have it in statute.
Well, we have, we have an ordinance in our books that allows them, that allows them to go through the process of approval or denial.
with Senate Bill 2208, and look at what just happened with the House bill, taking away local control and local permitting. So if we were to have a moratorium, or now we're open up to state funding being withdrawn?
That's why I don't want to do the return.
I got a big problem with that, too.
Right.
It's like taking away local control from townships and the counties. I've got some serious concerns. So I'll approve, I'll support this, but I think it's something we need to have a discussion about after this legislative session because we're gonna have to figure out some different spaces to protect our jurisdiction when it comes to local control.
Right. Yep.
I'm gonna bring up something under other business here, too, that's related to that.
I'll move to approve the solar ordinance.
Fine, I will put my money where my mouth is. I will second it, noted my concerns.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken?
Grudgingly, yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Undecided.
Are you abstaining?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox? Commissioner Woodcox?
I didn't hear your vote. I'm relying upon you to influence my vote. What did you do?
I'm not gonna argue.
He voted yes.
He voted yes, yeah.
Chairman Bitner?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay. Next on the, last but not least, is the administrative change to platted non-access lines. Non-access lines are selectively drawn on a plat to limit access to high-speed, high-traffic volume roadways and at intersections to lower traffic accidents. County staff reviews these non-access line locations and make recommendations to the County Commission during their plating process. Once non-access lines are recorded on a plat, it currently requires the owner to replat that to allow an access for a new location. Staff's intention are to be able to make an administrative change to a non-access line on the plat while not compromising important safety concerns. Minor changes to the access line can be completed in a less complicated method by use of a resolution and affidavit. There's a $250 non-access line modification fee, application to the Burley County Planning, and for staff review and additional staff as needed. After the petition is presented at a public hearing to the Planning Commission, it comes to the County Board for an affidavit and resolution approval. Auditor stamps the assigned affidavit, and all documents will be recorded by county staff and filed and attached to the original subdivision. There's a list of properties at the bottom of that memo that they have made applications, and they realize how difficult it is to go through this and what the cost is, and they basically lived it. The problem is, some of these people have fairly large lots that they plat. They don't know exactly where they wanna have their access line, so, but we still draw that non-access line on the plat. Or they'll tell, they ask us to put it right here, and we approve that, but the rest of it, and they, once they start building, they wanna move it 100 feet to the south or whatever. And so they have to come back and plat it, which is a lengthy process and costs two to $3,000. So this allows us to do these minor changes without that process.
I don't see any issues with it.
Well, I was originally opposed to the notion because I just wanted to make sure that it came before the County Commission, so it wasn't somebody just, you know, changing access lines and whatnot, whatever, but since we added language to it, that it goes before the Planning Commission and the County Commission, it really does simplify the process for people that need it, but it still comes to this board.
And mitigates costs.
Yeah.
And mitigates a lot of costs.
Yeah, and I think, I think there's good reason to do it.
Yeah.
And I'm comfortable with it since it comes before both the Planning and the County Commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Bakken?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Chairman Bitner?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mitch.
Do you have an easy one for us?
Yeah, yeah, I do. I got a, I got something I want you to think about. This discussion just came up recently. There was a discussion about some legislation that'll increase the primary residence credit to some number other than this 500. And so I was asking for how that impacted my property. What does that look like on my property tax statement and now VIGM, but it's hard, went and put together some stuff for me on mine. And then I also was asking to do it for a legislator and the Association of Counties Director, and so that they would have information about what does that do to your taxes, you know? And then what's the impact gonna be of the sales tax replacing property taxes? And then what's the difference between 500 and 1,250, you know? So that people get, okay, so one of the things that came up is what we do, because I asked, how do we apply that $500 property tax credit, you know? And the answer was, well, we apportion it based on the percentage of...
You did just local sub?
Yeah, each subdivision, like Burley County is 17% of the property tax statements, so 17% of the 500 goes to Burley County. The others, same deal. So the thing I need you to think about moving forward is that when we start offsetting property taxes with sales tax, we're gonna change those percentages. And at this point, what I'm thinking that we need to do, because there may likely be some of those other things like the garrison diversion, or the state, or other things that we still, we should, we don't wanna give up percentage until all of those things are covered, right?
And so I...
Bills paid first.
Yeah, we want the bills paid first as far as the county portion, and then we can worry about, but then I saw something where it's illegal to give something to the schools or something. I don't remember what that was, but I was reading it going, what? Well, no, to the school districts, I mean. Then I'd need more information than that. But anyway, the point is that I wanted you guys to think about that, because I think the best thing we should do at this point, and just what a little bit of thinking I've given, is that we wanna keep the percentage like what it is today, and then when, if that eliminates, you know, the county portion of property taxes, then we can apportion it out to the other subdivisions on a percentage basis. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I thought you said you were gonna give us something easy.
Well, that's easy.